Want to call to order a Board of Education meeting, February 25th, 2021, 7 o'clock. John, take attendance.
All Board members are present.
Okay, could we say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
And.
One nation.
One nation.
One nation.
On God.
On God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
With liberty.
Justice for all.
And justice for all.
And that's one thing we can't wait probably to get back in person to do. With that, we will go to Superintendent Watson for a COVID data update and staffing update, two and three on the agenda.
Thank you, President Cohen, and good evening, everyone. David, go ahead and skip to the first slide, please. Thank you. So COVID vaccine distribution. Good news, both Pfizer and Moderna continue to see increase in the number of not only staff being vaccinated, but number of doses available, which is a great sign. This past week, Oakland County Health Division got the largest shipment of doses so far. So that's a continued trend that is in the positive. Next slide, David. Can you go back one? Try for a little. Can you go back one more?
It's acting a little weird here. Let's try this.
There we go. Yeah, thank you. So this is the most recent report as far as Oakland County Health Division. Overall, we saw cases increase by 222 compared to the last report. The 14-day average daily case count is up some, but the percent positive seven day and percent positive 28 days are down a little bit. Next slide, please. Go ahead.
Okay.
Go forward one more. Thank you.
Is that correct?
No, we're still stuck on the weekly COVID-19 report. We should be at the data dashboard now from Oakland County Health Division.
Somewhere right there.
Yeah.
Let me, I think I'm having.
There we go.
Okay.
There we go. Well, no. We're definitely having tactical problems. So let me stay on this one for a second.
That I can, I can pull it up if needed.
Yeah, go ahead, Corey. I'm having a problem. Thank you. So sorry.
No problem. So Corey, when you pull it up, we'll get the COVID-19 summary for Oakland County. There'll be the data dashboard. We'll have the total cases top left and counts by day top right. Go back, I believe, two slides, please. Forward one. You know, we'll keep it right there. I'll skip that one for now. Hospitalizations, the trend still continues to go down and is starting to level off. So a good, another good sign, our hospitals still have capacity to treat not just COVID patients, but non-COVID patients as well. Next slide. Looking at our new cases per 100,000 and percent positive. This is our 22nd day in yellow for new cases per 100,000. And for percent positive, it's our 21st day in yellow. Again, that trend is fairly stable over the past couple of weeks. Next slide. So looking at new daily, daily new confirmed COVID-19 cases. Great. Thank you for making sure everyone is muted so we don't have that feedback. So we're at about 70,000 per day. A couple of ways to look at this. One, obviously, it's a good trend that it continues to go down. However, I think we also need to be cognizant that 70,000 cases per day is still incredibly high nationwide. Next slide, please, Corey. Looking at the data dashboard, you can see we're at 63,000 total cases, counts by day. It's really starting to fluctuate. We had a, especially when you look at what happens over the weekend, not as many cases reported. And then looking at the bottom left, the seven-day average of daily new cases, starting to kind of level off right there as well. And so that's another trend that we continue to keep an eye on. And then again, of course, the cases broken down by age group. Next slide, please, Corey. Thank you. President Cohen.
Sorry, I was muted. Any questions or comments before we go to the staffing update? I don't see anything in the chat, so Superintendent Watson, you can go to the staffing update.
All right, Corey or David, staffing update, please. Okay, next slide. So looking at recent staffing update, we have 229 staff members that are recovered or returned. Currently, we have 24 active that are out on FMLA. Looking at our paras, we're still down about 12. 12 preschool latchkey program, we're down 30. Drivers, we're down nine. Next slide, please. So positions that are still open, and we continue to look to fill as many as possible. Secondary math teacher, director of physical plant services. We need three latchkey kids' zones teachers, one supervisor, 13 bus drivers, 14 to 15 para educators district-wide, four part-time food service positions, a social worker, and foreign instructional assistants at Wing Lake. Next slide, please. Thank you, President Cohen.
Any questions for Pat? Okay, I'll give a.
I have a question.
Report. Sorry.
Ask a quick question. Yeah, so with the 30 down in latchkey, does that have any practical implications for the functioning in any of the buildings? Or how does that work?
In part, it will limit how many openings we can provide based on staff, right? So that's a big part of it as well. So we will only have so many spots when we open up Kids Time, Kids Zone, and Latchkey based on how many staff members we have to work at. And it's really difficult, and it's not just, you know, Bloomfield Hills is having a difficult time finding additional staff. It's pretty much everywhere right now. So we continue to look and try to, you know, turn over every possible rock to find additional staff, but we'll do the best we can with what we have to service, you know, and provide help for as many families as possible.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, with that, I'll go to President's report. So I'll just make this quick. Just want to say a couple of things. So on behalf of the Board, I want to thank all the community for your feedback and to let you know it has all been read and heard. We'd also like to state that, you know, we as a Board do not align with any groups, and we always vote what's in the best interest of the community, students, and the district as recommended by our superintendent and the staff. We are always open to deliberate, hear feedback from all sources prior to a vote. We also want to thank you again for all your feedback, as individual Board members cannot decide anything without the full Board support. With that, Superintendent Watson, you wanted to give your Superintendent report?
Sure. Thank you, President Cohen. February has been a busy month for recruiting. We've welcomed a new Assistant Superintendent of HR, Director of Communications, Interim Director of Facilities, a District Assessment Coordinator and Data Specialist, a Principal for Eastover, Principal for Way, and an interim Principal for Bloomfield Hills Middle School, and numerous other teachers and staff members that were added as well. I also had the opportunity to visit Bloomfield Virtual, and I sat in every grade level except for fourth grade, and I got to see exactly what I thought I was going to see. It's the same thing when I see, when I visit all of the buildings. We have exceptional teachers. They continue to go above and beyond when it comes to teaching the children in this community. The creativity, the adaptability, just the sheer amount of planning. And again, sometimes, you know, everyone has their own profession, right? So I taught in the classroom for almost 20 years. The amount of time it takes to plan a lesson and make it a great lesson is unbelievable amount of time. To try to do that in this current situation where you're learning to teach virtually or you're teaching concurrently at the same time. So hats off to the teachers, not just in Bloomfield Virtual, but in the classroom as well, spending three or four times what would be spent on planning in a typical year to put together one lesson so that they can continue to move our students forward. Also, Winter Park of Bowers Farm. Thank you to all the staff of Bowers Farm and Alan Jaros. If you didn't get a chance, Winter Park closes this weekend. Come out and enjoy the final, final weekend. I've tried to get tubing tickets. It's next to impossible. Over 10,000 tickets have been sold. It kind of reminds me of growing up as a kid and trying to get those tickets to U2. You might not ever get them. It's just not going to happen. So what a great opportunity for the community to get involved. So thank you to everyone there. We held our kindergarten virtual open house on Monday. If your child will be five years older by September 1st, 2021, enrollment is now open. Todd Bidlack and his team did a great job. He kicked it off with giving out the graduation year, and I about fell over. He started by saying, "Welcome, class of 2034." That hit me really hard. You know, someone that graduated in the 80s, it's like, wow, 2034 is going to be on someone's jacket at some point. But that went well. And then looking, looking forward to the summer. You know, we're pleased to be offering summer camp opportunities for all ages, all abilities, and all interests. New this year, families will have the option to select individual days, an entire week, and an option to pay for the entire summer. And so that is my update, and I'll turn it back to you, President Cohen.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. So we'll go now to six A administrative appointments. Tina? Well, first, I'm sorry, do we have a motion first?
I move that Ken Vavruska, I hope I didn't say that wrong, be appointed as interim Director of Physical Plant Services with a retroactive effective date of February 16th, 2021.
We have support.
I support.
By Tina?
It is really and truly my pleasure to introduce Ken Vavruska as our interim Director of Physical Plant Services. Ken has over 20 years of experience with public school operations, mostly in Bloomfield, and a bachelor's degree from Oakland University. I have personally come to know Ken over the past many years as a very dedicated worker, a hard worker, an excellent problem solver, especially during these times. And he is very committed to serving the district. So congratulations, Ken, in advance of the vote, but congratulations, Ken.
Thanks, Tina. Any comments, any discussion? Okay, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Congratulations, Ken. Either way, go Grizzlies. I'm a yes.
Eva?
Yes.
I'm a yes, congratulations, Ken. Most of passes 7-0. Is Ken on? I don't know if Ken's on or not. There he is.
Yep, I'm on.
Ken, you want to say a few words?
Sure. First of all, appreciate the Grizzly shout-out. That always makes for a good start to a speech. Tina, thank you for the words. Like to thank the Board. Thank you, Pat and Tina, for the opportunity. I'd also like to thank the entire Physical Plant Services team. They've truly been awesome over these last few months during some pretty major changes to our department. I've learned a lot over the last few months, and I'll continue to learn. It's been an amazing opportunity to grow both personally and professionally, and I'm really just excited to see where this all takes me and looking forward to being part of some pretty cool changes coming up in the district in the next few years. So thank you.
Congratulations, Ken. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to six B. Can I get a motion?
Sure. I move that David Baker be appointed as interim Associate Principal of Bloomfield Hills Middle Schools with an effective date of February 22nd, 2021.
Support.
Thank you, supported by Jennifer. Todd?
Supported by Howard.
Oh, sorry. Supported by Howard. Thank you, Michelle. Todd, you want to say a few words?
Yes, good, thank you, Paul. You might actually remember Mr. Baker. He retired only maybe a year and a half or two years ago. So it's not so much that we are hiring Mr. Baker, but rather, Mr. Baker is returning as our interim Associate Principal for Bloomfield Hills Middle School. That's where he taught most of his career, and he actually filled in in an interim position prior when Mr. Fitzgerald had to be out for a little bit. So this is his second interim at that building, and we are very excited to have Mr. Baker back with us to help us finish out the year. As you know, Mrs. Harleen Seen is moving over to Eastover as their new principal, and Mr. Baker has graciously accepted our offer to help us get through the remainder of this school year by making sure that Mr. English has the support that he needs. So the staff is very familiar with Mr. Baker, and we think he's going to do exceptionally well over there.
Thanks, Todd. Any other discussion? Okay, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
All right, Michelle, forgive my ignorance. Who are the Grizzlies?
Definitely. That's okay, Jennifer. The best institution in the state, Oakland University.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I vote yes.
No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes, welcome back, David.
Michelle?
I'm a yes. Welcome back, David.
Eva?
Yes.
May I ask, motion passed with 7-0. Congratulations. Is David on? Say a few words? Here he is as well.
There we go. Well, good evening. Thank you very much. Thank you, Todd, for the kind words, the introduction. Thank you to the Board for accepting my appointment. I have to say thank you very much to Randy for extending the invitation to come back home. I wouldn't come out of retirement for anyone, so that says a lot. And I know it's been a really challenging year for everyone. So I'm looking forward to come back and hopefully have a nice, strong finish at Bloomfield Hills Middle School, working with the teachers and with Randy. And it's great to walk the halls again, so I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Congratulations.
Thanks.
With that, we will go to general discussion. Pat, return to face-to-face instruction update.
Thank you, President Cohen. So tonight's proposal is a full five-day in-person learning for grades K through 12. Next slide, please. So all students in Bloomfield Hills schools can attend school for a full school day, five days per week, beginning April 5th, 2021. Next slide. So for Bloomfield Hills High School, Black Hawk Hour will go back to the morning at the beginning of the day from 7:30 until 9:00 a.m. So school starts at 9:35. The school day would end at 2:30. Our middle schools will run from 8:15 a.m. until 3:05 p.m. Elementary school would be from 9:05 a.m. to 3:55 p.m. Wing Lake would be from 8:45 a.m. to 2:35 p.m. The International Academy would be 7:45 a.m. to 2:35 p.m. And Bowers Academy would be from 9:35 a.m. until 2:30 p.m. Next slide, please. So a little bit about, more about Black Hawk Hour. It was created to meet student learning needs during pandemic learning, which is what we're in the middle of a global pandemic. So this innovative response was designed to address the difficulty providing student support when instruction is simultaneously in person and virtual. While well-received, it is important to understand that Black Hawk Hour is only permissible during pandemic learning, as permitted by the Michigan Department of Education Pandemic Learning Guidelines. As we return next year, Black Hawk Hour will not be available. However, the district is reviewing ways to implement the best of Black Hawk Hour within the school year. Next slide, please. And this is further update, like we said, we would bring back based on our board meeting two weeks ago. So looking at the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services guidance around spacing lunch. So spacing for instructional setting guidance, maintain six feet of distance. If a school district nonetheless proceeds with an all-in approach, at a minimum, it should maintain a minimum seated distance of three feet in classrooms. Our response, students will have three feet of physical distance. Lunch guidance, when students eat lunch, provide six feet of distance to the extent feasible. Our response, students will have six feet of physical distance at lunch. Next slide, please. So looking at Wing Lake, return to full-time instruction. Wing Lake staff began planning for a return to full-time, face-to-face instruction early February. This planning includes migrating from the current one schedule platform to a virtual or in-person option. Please keep in mind that over 99% of Wing Lake students do not wear a mask. Protocols for safely meeting students' personal care needs, especially shared bathrooms and hallways, are going to be updated. Inadequate staff is in place. Daily temperature checks and limitations to visitors will continue with hydrotherapy starting, restarting in March. We are committed to keeping students co-horted once off the bus to the greatest extent possible, all while maintaining our exceptional level of instruction and care. Moving back to, full-time instruction entails a selection window for parents and guardians to log into MyStar and select either in-person or distance learning for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year. This will allow staff to determine how many students are remaining virtual and plan for any necessary changes to classroom assignments. Based on the results, each grade band will determine whether or not to have one virtual teacher versus the teachers in the grade level sharing virtual responsibilities. Updating our related services schedule to meet the needs of both in-person and virtual students while staying compliant with IEPs and contingency learning plans. In-person students will return for a full day, Monday through Friday, from 8:45 a.m. to 2:35 p.m. There will be one asynchronous learning day, March 26th, leading up to the start date for furniture storage, room setup, and additional professional development to outline new procedures and protocols related to mitigating COVID-19. Next slide, please. So Wing Lake lunch and recess plans, meal protocols, breakfast and lunch will be delivered to the classrooms by food services and program aides. Staff will continue to follow all safety procedures for feeding students. Staff will utilize PPEs such as gloves, masks, face shields, gowns, scrub jackets during feeding times. Students will be physically distanced from one another. Playground, a school-wide playground schedule has been developed for contact tracing purposes, one to two classrooms at a time. Preferably, classes that share bathrooms will play at the same time versus mixing with another group. Entry and exit to the playground, classroom doors leading to the playground, rooms 6, 8, 10, 12, and 14, and then the main lobby doors, rooms 3, 5, 7, 9, 11, and 15. Next slide, please. Cone it, lunch and recess plans. Excuse me. Each classroom will be split into two groups of students. Each group will have an assigned room for lunch. Every student will have six feet distance from another student. There will be assigned tables and desks that will be wiped down before and after eating. Other COVID safety protocols will continue, hand washing, teachers bringing students down to and from eating areas, utilizing staff to clean tables between lunches. Masks will be removed when eating only. Students will be engaged in a developmentally appropriate video during this time. Two lunchtimes, utilizing para educator and latchkey staff for supervision. Rooms that are going to be used are in close proximity. The pairs are supervised two to three rooms. There'll be 24 to 30 students total divided between the two to three rooms. Teachers will have their duty-free lunch when the students eat. Recession will be scheduled independently by classroom teachers at their discretion, utilizing our large campus of playground spaces and athletic fields that's spread out for social distancing. Custodians apparel will help deliver lunches ordered that morning. Next slide, please. Eastover, every student will have six feet of distance from another student facing the same direction. Students will be utilized in a variety of spaces during lunchtime, classrooms, common areas. Classes will be split into two groups of students. Each group will have an assigned room for lunch. Lunch will be delivered to the classrooms. Assigned tables and desks will be wiped down before and after eating. Para educators and latchkey staff will supervise lunch periods. Teachers will have their duty-free lunch when the students eat. Other COVID safety protocols will continue, hand washing, masks will be removed only when eating, utilization of staff to clean tables between lunches. Recession will be scheduled and supervised by the classroom teacher, utilizing our two playground spaces and athletic fields that's spread out for social distancing. Next slide, please. Lone Pine lunch and recess plans, school lunch will be delivered to classrooms. Most classes will eat in their classroom, using adjacent hallway or media center space as a spillover to ensure the six feet of social distancing. These classrooms will use a combination of student desks/tables and lightweight portable tray tables that can be collapsed, stacked, and stored after each lunch. Students from room 6 will eat in the media center spaced six feet apart using computer lab and media center tables. Students from room 10 will eat in a larger vacant classroom, room 16, using tray tables. Students from room 19 will eat in the gym using tray tables. Tables and desks will be assigned to each student and wiped down before and after eating. Two lunches will be run, utilizing para educators and latchkey staff for supervision. Teachers will have their duty-free lunch when the students eat. COVID safety protocols will continue, hand washing, masks will be removed when eating only. Students will be engaged in a developmentally appropriate video during lunch to focus attention forward. Recession will be scheduled independently by classroom teachers at their discretion, utilizing our large campus of playground spaces and athletic fields that's spread out for social distancing. Next slide, please. This is a picture of Lone Pine as they're getting ready to set up. So you can see the top left are the lunch trays that are going to be six feet apart. To the right are desks that are six, three feet apart. The bottom left is going to be another area for lunch, using the space available, and same for the picture on the bottom right. Again, another lunch space using these portable lunch trays and using all spaces available to get to six feet of social distancing during lunch. Next slide, please. Way lunch and recess plans, every class will be split into two groups. Three separate lunchtimes spaced 10 minutes apart, 25 minutes in length. Other COVID safety protocols will continue, hand washing, teachers bringing students down to and from the eating areas, utilization of staff to clean tables between lunches, tables disinfected before and in-between each lunch period. Common areas set up for lunch for the remainder of the year, including gym, media center, and former computer lab. Teachers, pairs, and administration supervise lunch. Teachers will have their duty-free lunch during scheduled recess. Masks will be removed when eating only. Every student will have six feet of distance from another student facing the same direction. Lunches to be delivered to each location, 10-minute cleaning period between each lunch, and 35-minute recess, independent reading time supervised by pairs and ancillary staff. Next slide, please. Middle school lunch and recess plans, variety of spaces will be used for lunch, including larger areas of the school, cafeteria, gym, fieldhouse to make sure students are spaced out. A minimum of six feet of social distancing between students during lunch. Mask removal will only occur while eating and drinking. Single seating, so one student per table. No students will be grouped together. All seats and tables will face the same direction. Assigned seats still determine the process. Assigned seats still determine the process of assignment, whether it's going to be alphabetical or by teacher. Adequate adults supervision based on student ratios. Grab-and-go lunch line, so there's no long lines. Outdoor seating, weather permitting. Other COVID safety protocols will continue, hand washing, teachers bringing students down to and from eating areas, utilization of staff to clean tables between lunches. Recession may not follow lunch immediately. Recession will be provided at staggered times. Recession can also be scheduled independently by classroom teachers at their discretion, utilizing our large campus of playground spaces and athletic fields that's spread out for social distancing. We will continue to adjust our plan as we know final student enrollment counts. Next slide, please. Here's an example of East Hills and their setup. Three feet of social distancing between desks or tables. Just so everyone can kind of get an idea visually what it looks like at East Hills. Next slide, please. K through five specials, students will engage in all co-curricular classes within the school day. Art, media, music, physical education, and Spanish. And then continue monitoring and support, use of outdoor spaces for physical education as weather permits, optimizing large group spaces for both learning and distance needs. And then feedback loops to staff regarding routines in spaces. Next slide, please. Six through eight electives, students will engage in all elective classes within the school day. Work in progress, rescheduling students across core electives to adjust to remote and in-person. PPE needed in specialty areas such as band, orchestra, and choir. Furniture adjustments and procurement. And then continue monitoring and support, use of outdoor spaces as weather permits, optimizing large group spaces for both learning and distance needs, and ongoing feedback loops to staff regarding routines and spaces. Next slide, please. Lashkey and Kid Zone. Black Hawk Extended Care will sunset on March 25, 2021. Hours of operation will be 7 a.m. until the start of school, and then end of the school day until 5:30 p.m. It continues to meet community need with wide range of availability. Early closure allows for additional cleaning responsibilities. Limited enrollment due to distancing protocols. Continue monitoring and support staffing levels, classroom arrangements that create opportunities for distancing, and training for staff health and safety in instructional shifts. Next slide, please. So timeline of milestone and tasks leading up to the full return on April 5. March 1 through 5, all K through eight students that are interested in changing from in-person to Bloomfield Virtual may indicate the selection on MyStar. Bloomfield Hills High School and Wing Lake will ask their families to indicate attendance in person or virtual to assist in preparing appropriate spaces for their students. March 1 through 5, survey families who are eligible for transportation to register for transportation. March 5 to March 26, adjust to the schedules as needed, stock additional PPE, and schedule furniture to be moved according to the new design. The Bloomfield Hills High School schedule remains the same. New schedules, including Unified Arts and Electives, will be communicated to teachers by building principals once enrollment is finalized. Wing Lake class assignments will be adjusted once enrollment is finalized to account for virtual and in-person students. March 8, March 8 through 26, complete new bus schedule for a full return. Now until March 26, and we're making great progress. Make sure all staff that want to be vaccinated are vaccinated. And then April 3, transportation times and stops communicated to families who register for transportation. If a family did not register for transportation by March 5, students can be added to existing stops on April 15 on a case-by-case basis. Going back up to March 5 to March 26, one thing that should be added and is not on there right now is potentially adding additional staff, depending on how many might choose to go in-person or how many might choose to go virtual. We may need to add additional staff there. And then continue with our overall recruitment of staff. Next slide. So again, the options, if returning to full class cohort size is not in alignment with the needs of the family, students can select to transfer to Bloomfield Virtual, grades K through 5, or distance learning grades 6 through 8 in Wing Lake. For the high school, we're just trying to see and get a sense for what the needs are going to be as far as how many may be returning. We know that for many high school students, they've made the decision to stay virtual for the rest of the year. And there's no question or no concerns about that. But if we know a large number of students are going to be coming in, particularly in a class, we may need to switch some classes. But students, even though we're having the survey, will still have the option whether they're going to zoom in each day or remain at home. But again, like I said, we know some students have already made the decision they will remain virtual for the rest of the year. Details will be shared with families upon board approval of the full five-day in-person schedule. Next slide, please. All right, I'll turn back over to you, President Colan.
Thanks, Pat. So we'll just go around in A, B, C order with two questions at a time till we get all of our questions addressed. We'll start with Howard.
Thank you, President Colan. Wow. Such a lot of work has been done over the last couple of weeks to adapt to the overwhelming response we heard from parents over the last number of weeks. Superintendent Watson and your staff really should be complimented to really listening to the community and responding accordingly. Also, I'd like to thank so much Phil and his teacher workforce. I know this is a very, very difficult time for you guys, but I think this is a very reasonable proposal that the superintendent has put on the table. It also should be noted that the next four weeks is not something that we're just resting on our laurels. There's a lot of work that still has to happen between now and April 5 to allow us to get from here to there. So I know the original proposal back two weeks ago was to open school March 15. Given the very extensive redo of the plan that the superintendent has done, that is no longer physically possible because of all the parent choice and rearrangement that has to happen. So the April 15 is the soonest that we can logistically get this actually implemented. So the two questions I have are, one, Superintendent, in your presentation on Black Hawk Hour, you talked about that Black Hawk Hour is only possible because the state has relaxed some rules. Could you elaborate a little bit on what those rules are? Whether that's something the legislature has done or MDE are relaxing those rules? And what could we do as a district and other school districts around the state to advocate for trying to, whatever those rules are that won't allow us to continue Black Hawk Hour into a next school year? Is there anything that we can do as school board members to advocate for making those rules that are in place this year extend into the 2021-2022 school year?
Thank you, Trustee Barrett. So in a typical school year, or traditional, whatever verbiage you want to use, the state requires 1,098 hours in a building in a regular school year. This year, because of the global pandemic, that was relaxed. That has allowed us to have Black Hawk Hour. We've received a lot of feedback about moving it back to the morning. If you notice, we had to start it even later, school day even later than before. I also want to acknowledge the students, and I'm talking close to 50 students, that individually emailed me about Black Hawk Hour. They were some of the most respectful and polite emails I've ever received in my life in almost 30 years in education. They took the time to say, Mr. Watson, we know you have a lot of decisions to make, but let me tell you why personally Black Hawk Hour has benefited me. Here's what it's done for me, and can we take another look at it? And be completely transparent, the 9:35, I'm not sure if we're going to be in the building by 9:35 some days, depending on traffic and other things, but that's the time we're going with. And it really was an effort by the district administration team, by the building principals, and just everyone coming together to make sure that was able to be put back in the hour. Now, as far as next year, we need to look at what parts of Black Hawk Hour are really good and what we could do to kind of incorporate it. So whatever flexibility we can get from the state, what requires, whether it's the number of days, whether there's 180 days we need to be in the building or 1,098 hours that we have to have clock hours. If there's more flexibility within that, that would be beneficial. Because as we all know, there's no magic number to the amount of days for someone to learn. There's no magic amount of hours that after, you know, 1,098 hours, you've learned everything you need to learn in that school year. Congratulations, you've hit the magic mark. So those arbitrary guidelines, the more relaxed those could be, the more opportunities we would have to do or have more creative things for students.
So as chairman of the Legislative Committee on the Board, if you could provide some of the, a write-up or just a little paragraph on what it is that you want our legislature to do, I could take that to our lobbyists in Oakland County and the School Board Association in Lansing and see whether they have other school districts that are saying the same thing. And maybe we can get some momentum to allow the legislature to continue that into the next school year and beyond. So that's the first question. The second question is, in your presentation, in a few different places, you talked about utilizing outside, but not in all the slides. So for each one of the buildings itself, I mean, you had it in specials and you had athletics, but you really didn't talk about it in the actual, you know, for the instructional day, other than specials. Is it possible to use, you know, given that April 5 is now in the springtime, is it possible that we could use outside more, you know, in additional times other than just athletics and specials, such that we could expand the three-foot and six-foot limits and try to give a little bit more elbow room to our students?
Absolutely, right? Pretty much to us, that's a given. We're going to go outside when we can, and we're looking at putting tents back up as well because those were well-received and provide some additional opportunities based on weather. Let's not forget, last year on May 8, it snowed, right? So if you're new to Michigan, welcome. So it can snow May 8 again, and then May 11, it can be 85 degrees. But yes, the teachers and, you know, staff will be taking students out when appropriate as much as possible, whether it's lunch or recess or for a class or an experiment. We plan on using outdoors, just like we did in the fall. So thank you, Trustee Barrett.
And tents also, will we be utilizing tents or is that not necessary?
We're looking at using tents again. And we're looking at, rather than renting, whether or not we're going to purchase some. Because for some, for example, the legacy courtyard at the high school, that might be an area they use all the time with a tent regardless of COVID. You know, choir went out, band can go out, orchestra can go out, theater can go out. You could have plays out there. So we're going to make the best fiscal decision based on that. But yes, we will have tents again, that's part of the plan.
Okay, and will those be available by the time we get to April 5? Or is there not enough time to make that happen?
That's the plan. I can't tell you whether or not that's going to happen for sure, it's based on rentals, but that's the plan.
Okay, that's all I could expect from this point. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Trustee Barrett.
Jennifer? Thanks, Howard. Jennifer?
I just want to say thank you to everyone who developed the plan. It's very pleasing to see Unified Arts back in the building per request of some of the teachers we heard from last time. And I want to thank you on behalf of the entire high school, who will be very happy with the preservation of Black Hawk Hour in the morning. It has been a huge help for our students. I have one, like, small logistical question and then a couple of comments. My comment is just from an equity standpoint to, I know what the limitation is between the three IA campuses, but to do what we can to take steps to have equity in scheduling for our high school students who attend IA aligned with our high school students who attend BHHS. We have about 120 kids over there. So as we look to later start times, to try to do what we can to make sure they get included in that. The question I have is about lunch. I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. You know, before COVID, obviously, the grades all had different lunch periods. And so it's what I think I'm hearing you say is that the lunch will be based on each classroom being in two groups. So will it be more like the buildings have two lunch shifts, but they're localized to either the classroom or the nearby adjacent rooms that you talked about? And then it works kind of that way, instead of having to schedule different lunch shifts for the different grade levels?
That's my understanding. So if you have a class of 24 students, 12 will stay in the room. They'll be able to get to six feet, and then the other students will go to an adjacent room. And at that point, they'll have their six feet as well. So you'll have 12 in each room. And then the next shift will come in after the tables are cleaned and everything's reset for them.
And then my last question is regarding along the lines of equity, has it been looked at whether Bloomfield, under this new plan, that the K-5 Bloomfield Virtual and the K-5 in-person have the same amount of instructional time and the same amount of Unified Arts time and so forth?
I don't have the exact times written down, but I can get that to you as far as exactly what it's going to look like per week, whether you're virtual or in-person, K through 5 compared to 6 through 8. I just don't have that written down right now.
Because I think if we're at another breaking point where families can decide to move, right? I think that that will just be an important part of families' decision-making. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Jonathan?
I don't have a lot of questions. Thank you for putting the plan together. I did read through most of the comments that came in through the portal. One thing that I'm not sure was addressed, and it's not in too many comments, but there were some concerns about mask wearing for all day and what type of breaks are being built in. Other than lunch, when would the kids be allowed to have their masks off and how would that look?
So I know from visiting buildings during recess, they would have like a mask break area where kids were, I don't know, 15 feet or even more separated, where they could go off to the side and take a mask break. So that was something that was done before. But per building, like, five mask breaks per day, that's not something that we've discussed at this point. But again, you know, happy to provide more detailed information if we're looking to see whether they're going to be scheduled and how often they're going to be scheduled and things like that.
Thanks, Superintendent Watson. I'm set for right now unless someone asks a question that leads me to a new question.
So hold on, I don't know if I answered that. So those outdoor spaces, when they're out, there's opportunities when they're out. They have areas for a mask break as well. So I don't know if I made that clear or not. And then also, staff will be responsive to student needs, right? So it might be, you know, I need to take off my mask. Well, you know, can you step out in the hallway for a minute, remove your mask, and come back in? You know, our staff is creative. And I think the benefit of being in hybrid for so long, we are used to students in the building and wearing a mask. And so that's something we've run across, so it'll just be for a longer period of time now.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Lisa?
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent Watson, LST, and everyone involved in making this plan. Like I said to you yesterday, when you know a plan is right, you just know, you feel it, and you can tell by the way everyone can really rally around. You can tell by the way everyone can, can really rally around it. And I got that sense uh, yesterday and throughout today. Anyway, here's my question. Um. High school. Now has to commit to virtual or in person rather. I know that they can, high school students can still decide on a day to day basis. Which they want to choose, but what, what part has changed? What, what do you mean by they have to commit to one? And, and what are the details about when would they have to commit?
Yes, well, let me back up to the first thing you said and kind of echo what you said. The amount of time and effort that was put in by the central office team, building administrators. Physical plan and transportation to make this happen was second to none. Um, everyone's been working fifteen, sixteen hour days to get this done. Now, going back to your question. We're not asking for people to say they have to decide or make a commitment. That if you decide you're staying home, you can never come in. It's the same flexibility, but we know some people have made that decision to stay home. We're trying to plan so that if I have a small classroom. And I have twenty eight students and I know that these students are probably going to come in. I might need to go to a larger classroom to make sure I get that three feet of social distance. So I need to move. It's just going to help for planning purposes. So really not too much has changed for that. Um, it's really about the spacing and just who's going to be attending if we can get a handle on that. Um, also, when it comes to transportation, we want to be as efficient, as efficient as possible. We're short on drivers, right? We've talked about that forever. So if we know X amount of students are coming in and don't need transportation, that's going to help as well. Um, but for those students that are still making that daily basis, they'll still, that daily decision, they'll still be able to do that.
They don't have to really commit. Um, they have to give an indication, I guess, but.
Yeah, it's not a commitment. I'm sorry if I'm not clear. Yes, so I've talked to several parents. They know their child is staying home at the high school for the rest of the year. Without a doubt, there's no questions. There's no answers or butts. As we combine cohort A and cohort B, we need to make sure we still have that three feet of spacing. So if we get a sense that, you know. Howard's daughter is only gonna come in maybe once a week. Okay, well, that helps us know. If Jennifer's son is going to come in every day, okay, we know that as well. We're just trying to get a handle on what it's going to be. But when it comes to transportation, that's the only hard commitment we need. If you're going to need transportation, we need to know. Because the time, if you look at this start times, the start time between the second run to get to the high school run is short. Shorter than other runs because we're not going to have the same amount of buses available. We need to make sure that if you need transportation, you, you gotta be in. Um, we also think that more students will start attending. With Black Hawk hour back in the morning, besides all the other great things the students pointed out. Um, they feel they would attend a little bit more. Right now, we only have about fifteen percent of our students at the high school that are attending on a daily basis.
Okay, uh, and that's the experience um, that I've been hearing. That's very consistent with that. So. I, I, I guess that's really the heart of what I was asking. Uh, they may have the best of intentions. Uh, to attend daily or sometimes, um, but you know, I, I think the vast majority. Maybe waiting to see who else is gonna attend and then decide. So.
Oh, yes.
They wanna commit to anything, but I'm happy to hear that they don't have to. Uh, then my second question is about um, Black Hawk hour is all virtual, correct? So, okay, so students need to meet with the teacher for extra help or whatever, that, that's still a possibility, but it's just virtual. They can't come into the building early and meet with the teacher.
Correct, it'll all be virtual.
Alright, so uh. I'm just thinking through in my head how this works. A teacher may be virtually meeting with a student while driving into work. Or they have to be their teachers still have to report to the building. Before the Black Hawk hour so that they can be at, in their classroom and at their desk in time to be able to conduct. Potentially meetings with the students during Black Hawk hour?
It will, it will depend. So there's a, teachers have to be, be available from seven thirty to nine for their students. Right? Um, so there's a thirty minute window to get to school for everyone, including students. So if you live within that window, you could conceivably be online helping your students. From home or from the lab, wherever you're at at the time, but then have that thirty minutes to get to school.
Alright, that's my two. Well, I got two, so.
Okay, Michelle?
I, I know it's already been said um, a million times, but I think we can't say it enough that I do appreciate. As everyone has already said, all the hard work that went into this and all the, all of the team members that played a role in presenting um. The proposal today with you, with you Pat. So I'm kudos to you and your team for that. Um, my, one of my questions, Jennifer, Lisa just already asked about the high school um, commitment, so I'm not going to um. Labor with that one. My other question is regarding um. The daily, daily screening. I, I know we, we were committed to um, having parents. Um, complete the daily screening. Um, I'm wondering, how, how is that monitored? Um, as we will be entering uh, this, this full day, uh, will parents continue to be required to complete the daily screening? Uh, one of the questions on that does ask about international travel. I'm just trying to uh, make sure we're all on the same page that the daily screenings should still be completed.
Right, so there's two levels. Level number one, which was the state mandate. We sent home a letter to everyone saying, you need to fill this out, sign it, return to the school, saying you're going to screen your child. Right? So that was level one. We added a second level of that, asking people to do not just commit, which is a state requirement that you would do it. But actually fill something out online. Um, we don't have the staff to check that on a daily basis, unfortunately. And I've said multiple times, going all the way back to August, this is where we need the help of the community. Right? If we're going to come back and be in now potentially full time. If your child is sick, please keep them home. If they've been exposed to somebody that potentially has COVID, keep them home. If your child was playing with a friend and that friend has COVID. And then you take your child for a test, but the test result has to come back, please don't send your child to school. Right? We want this to be the last shift of the year. We want our students to be able to come back and enjoy the closest thing they've seen in a year to a regular day of school. And to do it every day for the full year. And I, and I get, we're all frustrated. As a parent, my daughter hasn't been in the building since last March, not one day in school. You know, at all. So I, I get everyone's frustration. But if this is going to work, everyone has to do their part. Everyone has to cooperate. There's no other way around it, or we're going to run into issues.
Thank you. You answered my question.
Thanks Michelle. Seva?
Thanks Paul. Uh, firstly superintendent Watson, thanks to the administration uh, for flushing out a very detailed plan. I had a couple of comments and a question. Uh, I, I, I echo the comments that, that trustee Baron raised earlier about continuing Black Hawk hour. I think there's great value there. And, and, and trustee Cook brought up the issue of uh, IA having a much earlier start time, so I, I echo that as well. Um, trying, this is a great plan for physically getting back in person. Uh, what about uh, additional, additional resources? Uh, for mental health and emotional support? Are we looking at additional counselors as our staff and students get back to school? Maybe you could comment on that.
We're not looking at adding additional counselors as we get back to school. Um, what's going to be really important is as our students come back, they start having some sense of normalcy. Right? It's still going to look a little bit different. You saw the picture at Lone Pine. They're going to walk in. And things are going to look different than if they're just coming back now than what they remember or just before. So if you go back to the summer and we did that trauma-informed professional development. That was for every single person administration, including, including myself. A lot of those takeaways our staff has been using all this year. Plus the social emotional learning team that Margaret has been running. Um, and all the things that they've put in place to support our students. We have our social workers, so we will step up and meet the needs of our students as we see them. You know that's something I've been concerned about, not just the mental health. I said numerous times. My concern that students at home may not be the safest place for them. So we'll be ready to step up and support and meet our students where they're at. We've got the right people in place that can do those things.
Thank you. No further questions, Paul.
Thanks, thanks Seva. Um, I just had and, and probably, you know, I just have a clarifying question for specials, K through eight. Um, so they're, they're not going to be any more um, online. They're gonna be live in the building, whether it's intense or, or somehow to make it repeat. I just want to clarify that. That's the only question that I have.
Yeah, so if you're in the building, the specials will be live in the building. We'll be using different spaces, whether it's outside, whether it's a different room, but yes, live in the building. Only for those that are virtual will it be virtual. Like K through five Bloomfield virtual, or if you're six through eight, you want the, you want to be remote. Some might be coming into the physical classroom to do the specials. Jim might be in the media center if we can't go outside. So there's gonna be a lot of unique uses of spaces better going on.
Got it. That's, that's the only question I have. Going back around or at this point, does anyone have any other questions? Howard?
Uh, thank you, President Cullen. Um, I just have one question, but it's kind of got a few parts. So um. The second quarter of the calendar year, the last quarter of our, a school year. Is known for having a num, a, a, a number of mass events. Uh, standardized testing. Um, the MDE submitted a request to um, the federal Department of Education. And the relaxation of standardized testing um, was turned down. Uh, second, um, the spring is known for a lot of arts events in the auditorium. Uh, whether it's music events, uh, dance, theater, et cetera. And then third, obviously in June are graduations. Could you speak to what the current thoughts are? Obviously, you know, things will evolve as we go over the next few months. But uh, planning needs to be, you know, go and taken into consideration. So, you know, what does standardized testing? Uh, audit, the use of orderions for art space and graduations look like for uh, two thousand twenty one school year here?
Right, so let's start with standardized testing. Standardized testing may require some virtual days for other students. To make sure that we can meet the spacing needed for students. As far as mass gatherings indoors, we're not looking at having mass gatherings indoors. Based on where we're at today. Um, the exception is going to be graduation, you know, whether that's indoors or outdoors, that would be potentially one of the exceptions. And I think the big thing is, we don't know what we don't know. Right? We don't know where we're going to be three months from now, two months from now, let alone two weeks from now. So we'll need to continue to adapt. And I've said this since last August. We need to plan for where we're at, we need to plan backwards, and we need to plan forward. And this is something that we're going to continue to do.
So uh, final, you know, just a follow up to that on graduation. When is the, the cutoff date that we, cause uh. Do we still have DTE uh, available?
We, we still have DTE. Graduation is scheduled for June sixth at DTE. Now depending on where we're at, we might have to limit, for example, how many people can come and where the seats are going to be. Um, but we still have that and I believe IA right now is preparing to hold their graduation. At Bloomfield Hills High School on the football field on June third.
Okay, so.
Which is outdoors as well.
So for the high school graduation, when will we make a final decision? Uh, you know, two weeks in advance, a month in advance, when, when is it that we have a Fisher Cut bait date?
With COVID, I don't know if there is one. I mean, that's the honest answer. I could say it's two weeks, I could say it's a month, so much can change. That, that is our plan. And if something changes within that plan, that we need to update the community. Then we'll update the community and of course the board as well. But there's no hard and fast dates that we can commit to right now.
Cause obviously people, you know, would consider flying in and there are a number of tickets and there's just a whole bunch of logistics that have to be worked out. Obviously, if you can let us know, you know, as, as the next month or two evolve, uh, that would be appreciated for the community.
Absolutely. We will also need to see what the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and Oakland County Health Division have for their gatherings as well. Right? There's the storyline right now that Governor Whitmer might be reducing. Um, some of those restrictions moving forward in the near future, we have to see. But if outdoor gatherings are limited to two hundred, then we're limited to two hundred. And that can change at any time, but yes, we will try to make sure we give as much notice uh, as possible.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks Howard. Any other questions? Let's see, any hands up? Okay, we will go now to public comment. So public comment, just to reiterate, public comment is limited to three minutes. Um, you know, please, uh, for people who are, who are coming into the meeting for public comment. You know, who wish to address the board, um, their comments. Um, are not to individual board members, the superintendent or district employees. Um, we want to make sure your comments are not abusive, discourteous or otherwise inappropriate with the order. Conduct and timely completion of the board meeting. Uh, with that, um, we will go to uh, Dave. To enter in the first person for public comment. Howard, you will keep the time.
Just to confirm, sir, it's three minutes per speaker?
Three minutes, three minutes per individual.
Thank you.
And president Cullen, just a reminder for all our callers who are calling in on a phone. To unmute yourself, you're gonna want to hit star six and that will unmute you and bring your uh, audio into the meeting. Here's our first public comment.
Before that uh, speaker goes, uh, just for everyone's uh, information, I'll be giving you a thirty second uh, warning. And then a uh, uh, indication when your three minutes are up.
Dave? First person is Lily Moss. Lily? There we go. Whenever you're ready.
Paul, do you want me to go to the next, next person?
We can, we can. Um, I mean, that's fine. We can always come back. Who, who's the next person? Christopher? Is Christopher on?
Can you guys hear us?
We can hear you now, yes we can.
Yes.
Sorry, we, I think my computer's a bit delayed, so I don't know if you can see us. Um, I'm gonna let my daughter Logan speak.
Um, okay. So, my name is Logan and I'm a Bloomfield student who needs a five full days of learning. I miss my friends very much and my best friends are on opposite, opposite days. At new schools, are virtual or moved away. The work at home is boring and takes a really long time. The work at home is boring and takes a really long time to do, sometimes three hours. I'm bored and don't feel like I am learning anything and I go to school alone. Screen makes my eyes hurt and I feel like I'm going to fall asleep. Too much screen time affects my behavior. It makes me feel frustrated and depressed. I miss seeing all of the teachers and I miss seeing, having all of the fun events at school, like the variety show and the school plays. I miss field trips and special visitors. I don't like how some kids are distracting others during class or, uh, turning their camera off because it is disrespectful to the teachers. I want to go back to school every day, all day, and enjoy the rest of the school year. I'm a Bloomfield student. Please hear my voice.
Thank you very much. Do we have the next student, Christopher? Dave, you want to go to the next student? Or the next public comment? Sasha? David, Sasha on?
Yeah, I don't know, I can't, with all the numbers, we have no clue.
Dave, we can just go to the next person that's on and if, if, uh, we have Cameron? It's Cameron, hi Cameron.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Cameron.
Okay. My, my name is Cameron. I'm in third grade at Eastover. I was in virtual in the fall. I want to read something I wrote for you today. My mom actually typed it for me, but, but I came up with it. At Eastover every day, I, I have to redo stuff in math because I was ahead of the hybrid students, uh, from when, when I was in virtual. It's hard because I have to redo stuff every day I, I've already done. I was excited to see all of my friends again in March. Then I, I found out you delayed it until April. I felt really mad because I, I hasn't, I, I haven't seen my friends in almost a year. I was so excited, then it came, it all came crashing down. At school for, for only part of the day, we only do math, reading and writing. I miss the, the other subjects. At home, I do science, grammar and, and social studies, but I don't actually learn anything. Because I, because I just do work pages by myself. Learning, learning from home is hard. I wake up, get online and, and, and the rest of the day I stare at a screen. Some days my eyes hurt and my mom and dad always say, don't look at screens too much. Kids say that they, they don't want to go to school, but I've learned that I want, I want to be in school. I was nervous to speak to you today because I didn't think you wanted to hear that an eight-year-old, what an eight-year-old kid had, had to say and nothing will change. But I decided to, I, I decided to because it was important. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Dave, so we have Erin and Maron?
Can you see me?
Yes, we can, yep.
Mary and I are both in fourth grade at Wayne Elementary. We need to, we need to go back full-time to have more time with our teachers and our classmates. My teacher has done an amazing job giving us enough work and keeping us busy. But some of the asynchronous work that is given to us is difficult to do at home. We need, we also need specials back in person because it is hard to do them virtually. I think we should go back in, back because just like Erin said, some of the asynchronous is hard to do at home and specials are hard too. All of our friends at different schools are back full-time and have been for a while. We are also missing out on being with classmates. Thank you for giving us a chance to talk. My friends and I want to be back, but yes.
Thank you, thank you very much. David, who's next? Jonah?
Uh, hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, I'm Jonah Frank, a sixth grader at West Hills Middle School. And I have, through the past, uh, almost a year now, we have been doing either online school or hybrid. And it's been very difficult for me because I have felt depressed. I have had anxiety and it's made me feel really sad because I miss those moments where I get to hang out with my friends and I get to be with them. And I just don't get to do that. Like, it's good that we're back in hybrid now and I can see some of my friends, but the whole cohort thing, I'm missing out on my friends in the PM and I'm missing out my friends that are in other cohorts. And it's just a very rough time. And especially when you don't have those healthroom teachers that you can normally get when you're fully in person. It's super difficult and specials as well. I, my, I've heard my specials teachers talk about how much they want to be back in person because they have talked about how hard it is to do specials online. Because, especially Jim, that's one of the things that is probably the most difficult thing to do online because Jim is probably the most interactive special out there. And other ones, it's just so much difficult, especially Spanish. It's not the easiest thing to learn an entirely different language that you're not used to online. And that's why I just think that it's really important that we should get me and other kids back into school.
Thanks, Jonah. Dave, who's next? Sophie? Sophie, you on? Dave, we can go back to Sophie. Who's, who's next? Logan? I guess that Dave, we can go back until we get the technology worked, uh, for the people. Logan? If not, Dave, next person? Jordan? Jordan Samia? David, they're in?
Paul, we unfortunately don't know because of all the numbers and, and even though match.
So, does some, do they know what to do? They need, they want to come off a mute, put their camera on? Does everyone know that? So if I call their name, okay. Like I said, if, if someone comes off and they indicate to you that they're, they're waiting, we'll bring them back on. Who's next, Dave? Hayden?
Hello? My name is Hayden. Hello, my name is Hayden Schwarzenfeld and I'm a seventh grade at West Hills Middle School. Before I start my comments, I'm sure I can't even imagine the pressure you have been under this past year. I know you've been trying to keep us all safe. Having said that, I truly believe that myself and fellow classmates need to be in person full-time. I am noticing the motivation and academic drive is not the same with Zoom learning or thirty-five minute classes. When we are in person, we can live our normal life and actually learn new things for a concentrated amount of time instead of switching classes in thirty-five minutes. Being a student is my, my most important job in life and I'm sure many others feel this way as well. In times like today, I understand that it is difficult to have full-time school, but school districts like Waterford, Livonia and soon Birmingham will be in school full-time. I don't understand why we can't be like these other public school districts. I appreciate the fact that the Board of Education agreed to a plan to be in school longer, but it is still not a full day. My father is a physician who has been a frontline worker in nursing homes and assisted livings throughout the worst times of COVID nineteen. I feel that he and many other doctors have learned much about the virus itself and how to safely live with it. A suggestion I would like to make to you is to ask all the doctors surrounding you, is it safe to go back full-time? I think you will find their answer is yes. Please take their answer into consideration, but I am imploring you to listen to the voices of the students. We want to come back, but even more so, we need to come back. Thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, Hayden. Um, Dave, just for the people who are calling in and, and out of technology, is there something they need to do, star six or to come off a mute?
That is correct. If they're calling in with a phone number, with a phone, they need to hit star six to unmute themselves when they're called upon.
Okay, so we'll just go back one to Jordan. Star six.
Yeah, we're here, can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Yeah, we can hear you, yep, yep.
Hi, my name is Jordan Colina and I'm a student at West Hills Middle School in fourth grade. I ask you to please put us in school five full days because virtual school isn't as good. Here are some reasons why. Number one, when someone is trying to say something and pour it on the computer, they freeze or glitch and we can't hear them. Number two, I feel like I'm learning much less. Number three, when everyone tries to talk at the same time, it sounds bad. Number four, I feel like my teacher gets more frustrated on Zoom than in class. Number five, it is also hard to deal with all of the technical problems. Sometimes my internet goes down and I can't get on Zoom, which makes me sad and anxious. Number six, if I can go out to eat, play tennis, see my family, go on vacation, then I should go to school full-time. Thank you.
Thank you. And now that everyone knows star six, the people calling in, we'll go back. Is Logan Cooper still on?
So Paul, I think there was some confusion because we just heard her name Logan. We thought that was our Logan.
Yeah, Logan already went.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, maybe it was Sophia Frank? Okay, we could, we could jump ahead.
Sophie, I'd say Sophie Frank is in the list.
I'm right here.
Okay, uh, Sophie, okay, your turn.
Hi, my name is Sophie Frank. I'm an eighth grader at West Hills and with going between online and hybrid, I'm scared for high school with the education I'm getting this year, especially with the amount of work I'm getting each day and only being in school four half-days. I'm also a visual learner and not being in the classroom five full days has really hurt my education and my mental health. This is why I want to go back five full days.
Thank you. Uh, was it Lily that we didn't have before? I don't know if she wants to go on star six. We can go back, we're up to now. Lily Moss? Okay, if not, we can go to Jessica. Would back, is Jessica on? Star six, if it's just your phone. Okay, David, next? Christopher? Christopher on? We can go back, David, next? Christopher? Next, David? Kate Harper?
Um, I'm here for Lily. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we are. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Lily Moss and I am an eighth grade student at West Hills Middle School.
We lost you for a second, Lily, are you still there?
Um, can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, we can hear you.
You can hear me? Yeah. Hello, my name is Lily Moss and I am an eighth grade student at West Hills. I need to be in school for five full days. As an eighth grader, I am worried about the fact that I am going to high school next year with less of an education than I should. We need to be prepared, not just for eighth graders who are going to high school, but for all students. Every day at school counts. Every minute we spend in the classroom increases our learning. The longer we wait to go back full-time, the more education we keep losing. We are falling behind. With all the pri- with all the private schools having been back full-time since the fall and many public schools planning to go back March fifteenth, it is unfair that Bloomfield Hills District is putting us at this disadvantage. When we go to apply to college, we are the ones who have to compete against all the other students with more knowledge and a better education and when they get to be back full-time. We need to start school. We are suffering for our future if our district will not allow us to go back full-time when we really need it. School is the basis to life and we need to get back on our track as soon as possible. Please hear my voice.
Thank you, Lily. Dave, next? Jessica? Is Jessica there, David? We don't know. Star six, if you're using your phone only? Okay, next? I think Kate was Lily unless Kate Harper had to talk herself.
Kate, Kate is me, can you see me? Okay, hey.
Yes, we can see you.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to wait for my turn, I didn't want to cut someone else off. Um, all right, uh, I'm Kate. I have three kids in the district, uh, one at B H, uh, middle school, two at Way. Just asking, like, please vote yes tonight. I haven't been on camera since November when the metrics showed that we should be in person. I'll come back tonight asking the same thing. But now, um, great plan presented, full-time return as soon as possible. Um, I'm sure that you've all heard about it. You got a letter a week ago that parents were signing to go back. As of tonight, I think a thousand parents signed it representing twelve hundred kids. So within six days with no, you know, formal process, all these people like begging to come back to school. Um, the teachers and the kids, in my opinion, have done pretty amazing in a terribly unfortunate and, you know, obviously needed during some of that period of time, uh, situation. It's time to move forward and to vote yes. Um, it's best for everyone. Pat has delivered a well-thought-out plan. Let's not pick apart all the details. Do what you said, trust Pat, let him and his team execute. The plan was really great, I read it before we came on here too. I feel like all the questions that have been brought up, they continue to answer and have a well-thought-out plan. Um, thanks for your support and I would personally like to say thank you to the teachers and the administration that have given my kids their time and energy over the past year. I, there's no way they're not burned out from what they're trying to do right now. I have teachers that are emailing us every Saturday and Sunday, keeping up and doing what is best for the kids. Um, you know, thank you to them for that. I'm hoping that we can proceed with some kind of new normal and get back to school. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Uh, next, David? Is Jessica on? Jessica, just to go back? Nope. Okay, I'll keep trying. Uh, Lisa Klein?
Hi, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent, a pediatrician and an advocate for five full days of in-person learning. Science, data and facts. While this year has not brought many positive things, at least it has given the medical world an opportunity to study and understand COVID and how to live with it in our communities. My point number one, data regarding the safety of in-person school. In North Carolina, a study was done in the fall of two thousand twenty of nearly one hundred thousand students and staff for in-person instruction. Through contact tracing, they found secondary transmission, transmission of COVID within school infections to be extremely rare. A study in Sweden, which kept schools open in the spring of two thousand twenty in the beginning stages of the pandemic, found schools to be safe and serious COVID cases very rare and masks were not even required there at that time. Chicago parochial schools studied over twenty thousand students in full-day in-person school with less than three feet of distance in some of the schools. They had lower rates among students and staff than the community at large. And yes, they also found that being in school with appropriate mitigation strategies can be done safe and successfully. And yes, they also found that being in school with appropriate mitigation strategies can be done safe and successfully. There are tons of more studies where those come from. My second point is data regarding social distancing and the six-feet rule. A review of multiple studies known as a meta-analysis shows that there is no benefit to three feet versus six feet in a classroom that has universal masking. A study in Ohio also worked with seven school districts during the peak of infections in the state and concluded the same thing. Mayo Clinic just published a study on masks and COVID droplet spread, which shows no major difference in one versus three versus six feet with masks. Bottom line, six feet is not always necessary. Last point, point number three, declining physical and mental health of children. Pediatricians are seeing an increase in anxiety, depression, behavioral problems, excessive weight gain and new onset eating disorders. Lack of peer contact, social isolation and lack of routine threatens the health of our children. Studies show kids are gaining significant weight sitting at home on the computer all day, which will lead to a rise in diabetes and heart disease in these children down the road. Data from emergency rooms has shown more suicide attempts in children.
You have 30 seconds.
Social isolation has resulted in increased domestic violence and child abuse, but less mandated reporters are around to identify it and intervene. Experts have sounded the alarm for the tsunami of psychological distress that school closures are having on our youth. It's time to believe the science, the data and the facts and let's join the other school districts who have normal five full days in person. Thanks for your time.
Thank you Lisa. David, who's next? Suzanne?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yep.
Hi, I just wanted to say I'm glad you guys have put together a plan. I'm not sure, like with all these comments, you know, you're going to be voting on the plan you currently have and I actually think that that's kind of a shame. I think that these children, I mean, they make me want to cry. They want to go back to school. The lady before me, those facts are real. I wish that you would consider doing it sooner. Birmingham's going back sooner, Waterford, all of these districts are going back in March. I recognize that it's a great challenge to get everything in place sooner rather than in April. My daughter's in high school. They need to go back to school. They need to go back full-time. They need to go back five days a week, full-time. It's not okay. The mental health is declining with these children, the fact that they haven't seen their friends. The education, don't even get me started. I mean, these kids can't learn online. It's ridiculous. They're, it's just not okay. So I wish you would consider doing it even sooner. The sooner you can change this and get these kids back in school, the better for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. Next David? Fazia? I didn't hope I pronounced it right. Fazia, are you on? Star six, if it's just your phone. We can get back. David, next? Nazir? Next? Nazir again, next? Nazir again, next? Janelle?
I'm here.
Okay, so Janelle?
Hi, my name is Janelle Wollek and I teach Spanish at Eastover, East Hills and Bloomfield Virtual. I'm also a parent to two Bloomfield Hills students. First, I'd like to thank you for everything that, you know, Superintendent and the board has done so far to ensure a safe return to school. At the moment, creative arts teachers at the elementary level support two to three different buildings with more class sections than we have in a normal school year. This is a possibility as the current schedule only calls for class with, once per week with each section. Once we're back to a full-time, full-day schedule, creative arts classes will need to be held twice a week to cover teacher prep time. Will the schedules be equitable for all Bloomfield Hills learners? Will Bloomfield Virtual students also receive as much special instruction as their in-person peers? Please note that this also puts an enormous amount of strain on the individual teacher who may need time to travel between classes if their space is being used or even travel between buildings and then have to repeat and restart every 30 minutes with a new group of students. It is exhausting, even in a normal school year with a reasonable amount of class sections, let alone this year when we have many more class sections and buildings to cover. Creative arts teachers are human beings. We're not robots. Is it your intention to hire more creative arts teachers to cover this need? Please also consider hiring more staff, if not to alleviate the revolving door schedule, but to limit our exposure to that many more students and staff than our general education counterparts. After all, the board meetings are still virtual. Thank you.
Thank you Janelle. Next David? Jennifer? Jennifer, you on? Okay, David, next? Kelly? Kelly, you on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Sophia Tumina. I'm a sixth grade student at West Hills Middle School. I'm going to give you seven points on why we should be back in school. Number one, number one is COVID masks. COVID masks are very annoying and hard to hear people talk through. Number two, time in class. Time in class is 30 minutes, 35 to 40 minutes and it's not long enough to finish work and for teachers to explain lessons. Number three, the half-day schedule. The half-day schedule is only four days a week and only half of the week. That's not, that's not much. Fourth is the time for specials. The specials time is only about 20 minutes, where it should be much longer. Number five, work on asynchronous. Asynchronous work is very annoying and often teachers might forget to post it or the work might be confusing. Number six, work in class. I don't often get to finish my work in class and it's very hard to understand all the concepts in class at such a small time. And the last one, number seven, students and teachers. We all know that teachers want to be, want to be online, not online, and they want to be in school full-time. We also know that students want to do that as well. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. David, next? Megan?
Thank you. Me Megan?
Oh, Jennifer's on?
Jennifer's on. Can you hear me?
We can go back. Yes, we can hear you Jennifer. Yep.
Okay, thank you. First, I just want to say bravo to the kids who have spoken up. Please hear their voices. And I'm going to keep this short and just tell you, my kids need five full days of in-person learning. I'm begging the board to adopt the plan so our kids can get the education they deserve. These kids need structure, routine, interaction with their peers and a meaningful education. Sadly, with the hybrid schooling they have now, they are not receiving it. Our kids have been falling behind academically and their mental health is at an all-time low. Two kids committed suicide from another school district from depression, from online learning, happening within 24 hours. What more needs to be said? Our kids deserve better and we need to be in school. I'm proud that you have a way to teach the students who want to learn from home and I'm happy that you're continuing to offer that education to those who need it. But Bloomfield Hills strives itself to provide equitable teaching and learning opportunities as well as committed to the social and emotional wellness of students and staff. Sadly, we've been failing in those aspects. You have Birmingham, Brighton, Canton, Clarkston, Claussen, Livonia, Northville, Novi, Oxford, Rochester, Troy, Wild Lake, Waterford, as well as numerous private schools who have figured out a way to educate their kids in person and it's time for Bloomfield Schools to do the same. Let me just say, I am one of approximately 1,000 people requesting full-time face-to-face learning and I beg you not only to hear the kids' voice, but to hear mine too. Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer. Megan?
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, well, I want to thank off the bat so many administrators and teachers that have managed to get us this far. And as, as it's been said before, it's been an undaunting task and one that so many of them have risen to so graciously and so willingly and for that, I personally want to say thank you. But I also want to address this four or five date because I think, while we can celebrate the efforts that got us to this four or five date, the fact is you're all talking about things that we could have been doing back in August. There are things that could be getting done by 3:15, which most other school districts, if not all of them, in Oakland County have figured out how to do, or they're back already and doing this already. And there's been for several months now, several parents that have stood here with their hands in the air saying, "We will do what it needs, what we need to do to help you figure out how to make this happen. We'll give of our time on the nights or the weekends to help you figure this out from an IT, medical, social, emotional, educational, structural perspective." And now you have all of us sitting here, 1,000 people deep, and you're just now starting to listen. I will tell you that for some of us, it's a little bit too much too late and here's a good example. My daughter just spoke to you moments ago. My daughter is still going to parochial school in the fall. Why? Because we can't roll the dice that this is going to happen again. That's where the faith and the trust in the Board of Education is right now. It took too long to get here and it was at too high of a cost. You have Catholic schools on an all-time high waiting list and I don't know how much data you've spent gathering on what your current families in Bloomfield Hills are doing in terms of getting themselves on those lists for next year. I think it would astound you if you paid attention. More importantly, and my, 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 my most important piece is we're, we're looking at this four or five date like it's some big victory. But I think any educator will tell you, for every single day that we are out of school, a kid could spend up to three days making that up. So if you do the math on where we're at now, it's only February 25th. If you want to wait till April 5th, you're basically putting us back into late May before these kids are going to feel like there's any semblance of forward movement on the school year. That's just too late. These kids can't afford another day, let alone another week of being out of school. That being said, I think you need to revisit this timeline. Do what you need to do. You've got an army of parents behind you that will help you figure this out to get the doors open.
Give me 30 seconds.
And lastly, I just want to say, in regards to board meetings, we've seen an ongoing amount of technical issues tonight. There are kids that didn't get called into this meeting that were sitting here waiting. We need to move these board meetings to full-time, in-person meetings going forward. Again, other districts have figured this out. Bloomfield needs to do the same. I am a Bloomfield parent and I want my voice heard.
Thank you Megan. David, next? Harris?
Yeah, Harris saying, "I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent and my child needs five full days of learning." This is not about me. This is not about you. This is about the kindergartner that hasn't learned how to play with other kids. This is about the 11% of our district on free lunch disproportionately impacted by remote learning. This is about the IEP and 504 kids that aren't getting the education they've been promised. This is about the juniors and seniors about to go to school or college and have fallen behind their full-time in-person peers around the country. This is about the single parents trying to juggle daily life while managing their kids' education. This is about the two working parents with one having to leave the workforce. Not good if the future is female. This is about the child that looks forward to going to school as a break to the constant fighting of her parents at home. This is about the child without the social interaction and structure of school that falls deeper into a darker hole. This is not about me. This is not about you. This is about helping the children that can't help themselves. When the dust settles, history will tell us, we were too risk averse and much of the damage to our children could have been prevented. Individually, you are all trying to do the right thing. Collectively, we have all failed our children. We need five days a week for K through 12. Every day counts. We need to start creating a no-compromise plan for fall. The community has lost confidence in the district and we need to fix that sooner rather than later. This is not about us. This is about our children. I'm one of 1,000 strong. Please hear my voice.
Thanks Harris. Next David? Nicole?
Hi, can you hear me? Can you see me?
Hello?
Hi, um, great. I'm Nicole Hill. This is my husband Andy Hill. We have first and third graders at WAY. So just to caveat that everything I'm about to say is in regards to K through five. I really don't presume to know what's best for middle school or high school students at this point. But the reason that I chose to speak today, I really just want to advocate for my children's well-being. My children need five full days. My children need it as soon as possible, before April, if possible. The best way that I can communicate why my children need this, I think, is to share it with you. I want to paint a picture. Yesterday, my husband and I made a list of just some of the challenges that we faced in just one day of virtual learning on a Wednesday. So within the first 10 minutes, my first grader was, came running upstairs upset. So he didn't know what page he was supposed to be on for school. It took me 15 minutes to calm him down, get him back on track. Okay, time was lost. About 20 minutes later, he was playing in the middle of the living room and why? Because it's easy to walk away from an iPad. Okay, not a lot of learning is occurring when they're staring at an iPad and they can simply look away or walk away. It took me 20 minutes of arguing with him and, you know, forcing him back in front of the screen, which, by the way, about a year ago, my pediatrician would have probably called social services on us if I told her that I was forcing him back in front of the screen for multiple hours a day. So we also spent, I don't know, maybe 30 minutes dealing with technical difficulties, dealing with the fact that the schedule changed at the last minute and we didn't know and we were trying to get on a Zoom call that didn't exist. Which by the way, no, no learning is happening during any of that time. Later in the day, my daughter had a meltdown because she had problems with her class assignment and at her maturity level, it's a lot easier to just come crying to mom and dad instead of asking for help from her teacher. And the thing is, when they're home, that option to come crying to mom and dad is always there. So, you know, the amount of, you know, stress and anxiety and strain on the relationship between the child and the parent at this point is just taking a toll on everyone emotionally, socially, everything. And I think you can hear it in my voice. I'm concerned my kids aren't getting
30 seconds.
The basic coping mechanisms that, that they learn when they're away from their parents, like managing their own stress and how to ask for help. They are not learning those things. Meanwhile, my husband and I are missing deadlines at work because we're interrupted every five minutes and we're fearful for our jobs. So I just want to reiterate that for everybody's social, emotional and, you know, educational well-being.
Your tone is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. David, I'm just curious, how many more public comments?
Give me a moment.
I just want to know if I should take a five-minute rest break for me and my colleagues.
We have about 38 more.
All right, I'm going to, after William Clark, we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll continue. William?
Hi, good evening. I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent of two boys in middle school and my children need five full days of learning. I've been working in an inpatient hospital setting throughout this pandemic and although it was pretty scary coming to work, especially back in April and May last year, what scares me even more now is the serious regression and depression that my wife and I have observed in our two boys. Our oldest son is a very bright young man and we've never had a single concern about any of his academic performance. Well, in the first semester of this school year, he failed multiple classes. And he's cried more times about his stress level and his level of depression, loneliness, sense of despair and isolation than we care to count. sense of despair and isolation than we care to count. We've tried our best to supervise his work and to motivate him, and it's just not working. He's basically lost, and all of our efforts to help him just haven't worked. We're all exhausted, and we're really struggling, and I'm seriously concerned about his emotional well-being. Our youngest son is a social butterfly. He's a happy, social kid. He's well-liked by all his friends. He loves his friends. He loves going to school. And this year, we've watched him regress emotionally and academically. He's become shy and withdrawn. He's completely unmotivated. It's a struggle to get him to do, to stay logged in and to keep track of his online scheduling. He's also had a little bit of academic struggles, but we're fortunate enough that we can put him in Mathnasium Math Tutor a couple of days a week, so he's keeping up. I hate to think how far behind he'd be if we didn't have that option. But that being said, our kids are falling behind. They're falling behind their peers that are in other schools that have been back full-time face-to-face, both locally and in other states. And we don't blame our teachers. Our kids' teachers are absolutely wonderful. We love them all. And I know they're trying their best, and I think they're to be commended. But they belong in the classroom, doing what they do best. And kids belong at school, not stuck in front of a computer screen all day. To piggyback on the excellent comment by Dr. Klein earlier, there's ample science to support safe return to school. The Centers of Disease Control and the American Academy of Pediatrics have stated that no uncertain terms. The kids belong in school, and it's safe for them to be there. Moreover, it's harmful keeping them out of school. In medicine, one of our guiding principles is first, do no harm.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. Anything other than a yes vote in the proposal for full-time return is harming our children. So to the Board of Education, I respectfully say, please, first, do no harm and vote yes tonight for full-time, five days of full-time education. I'm one of over 1,000 strong. Please hear my voice. Thank you.
Thank you. If it's okay with our colleagues, we'll take a five-minute rest break and come back at 8:57? Is that okay?
Yes.
My name is Meredith Morris. I'm a parent of three daughters, two on the elementary level and one at the middle school. I wanted to talk tonight because we have some grave concerns that I think are reiterated over and over. And I have been doing this for a long time, and I've been talking to the board and parents. But what I think is most frustrating right now is that we have been doing this for several months and bringing facts and data, social, emotional health, lots of other documentation to the board. And there's no refutes or rebuttals, but rather, it's not addressed at all. And that's very frustrating. So it's just, it's looked upon, it's just put over to the side. And so right now, we need, we need that to end. We're asking you, the school board, Lisa, Michelle, Jennifer, Howard, Siva, John, and Paul, to hear our voices. Your job is to keep our communities cool and safe and secure. We need that to happen. And we realize this encompasses a large area, okay? And out of that pie, the pie that we need to keep safe and secure, teachers are part of that pie. That is absolutely correct. But so are we, the parents, the community members, and absolutely our children, the students. And so we need you to move your head and look to the other side and take a different view from this. Because this is something that, it's been neglected, and it's very apparent. And when I say "we," I'm using that pronoun because I'm speaking for many. I'm sure by now, you've been able to see our website that a small group, a task force, has put together, and we've launched. And in less than six days, we have 1,000 selected signatures for our petition, okay? I just want you to think about that at the moment. Just let that resonate for a second. Within five days, 1,000 signatures, and it's gone up every moment. So I'm assuming in the next day, 1,200, and by the end of the week, we know. But reflecting on that, we came up with some data, and I know Megan brought it up earlier. Out of those parents that did our petition, we have 76.5% of them, so this encompasses 918 students out of the 1,200 that this has affected, have already made plans to leave the district. They have already enrolled their children in another district.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you, Howard. So I want you to hear that one more time. 76.5%, 918 students, they plan to leave the district. They already have enrolled their children in a different district, parochial or private, or they plan on enrolling their children somewhere else. This needs to sit, and it needs to be thought of, and we need to do it earlier than April 5th if this can happen. My name is Meredith Morris. We are 1,000 strong. Please hear my voice.
Thank you, Meredith. Next, Dave. Corinne?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Corinne.
Hi, I'm Corinne Babcock. I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent, and my children need five full days of in-person learning. I have a second grader and a fifth grader who are enrolled in hybrid learning. What that really means is four half-days of learning by incredible teachers, followed by a 30-minute special Zoom and a few asynchronous assignments that my second grader often won't or can't do independently, as well as approximately two to three hours of work on Wednesdays. This is not, and has not, been a sustainable model, but it is being treated that way. My children are missing the social and emotional connection they so desperately need from seeing their teachers and peers in the flesh. Friends and family in private schools are attending five full days without issue, as the data shows, safe to be in person, and children are not spreading COVID-19 in schools. When sports are playing and preschools are open, what do I tell them when they ask why they can't go to school? The answer surely isn't the issue of keeping kids six feet apart. The board has been depriving our children of the education they want, they deserve, we pay taxes for, and that is safe enough to have. I am one of 1,000 strong. Please hear my voice and send in-person families back to school for five full days on March 15th. Thank you.
Thanks, Corinne. David, next. Jennifer?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jennifer Frakes, and I'm a parent of a first grader at Conan Elementary and a fifth grader at Bloomfield Hills Middle School. First, thank you to Superintendent Watson and the team working on the Return to Full-Time, Five-Day Face-to-Face Learning Plan. It seems very well-thought-out and comprehensive. I am urging the board to vote in favor of this plan and bring the students back as soon as possible. My children are falling so far behind due to hybrid learning. My first grader is just learning to read and struggles to understand his asynchronous work, often because he cannot read the directions or needs more guidance on the curriculum. My husband and I have very demanding jobs that are unable to help him during the daytime. I fear that my fifth grader is spending his asynchronous time watching YouTube rather than doing his independent work. However, again, I'm working all day, so I cannot monitor his actions. When we do engage our first grader to do his worksheets or CSO in the evening, it is a huge fight. Everyone ends up yelling, and he runs off crying, again getting minimal work accomplished. We cannot continue having all this conflict in our house, and my kids have gone from loving school to hating school. I know the teachers are doing everything they can to support the students, and it has to be exhausting for them to manage these hybrid schedules. I truly appreciate all they are doing, and I'm so thankful to have such amazing and caring teachers for my children. I completely agree with Superintendent Watson that we have exceptional teachers. My colleagues at work with children all over the metro Detroit area in both private and public schools have either been in full-time face-to-face learning or have plans to return in the very near future. It will be unfortunate if we have to enroll our children in private school or move to another nearby district if the Bloomfield Hills schools does not return to full-time face-to-face learning. I urge you again to please vote in favor of returning to full-time, face-to-face, five-day learning and bring them back as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Corinne Stevenson?
Hi. I have a second grader and an incoming kindergartner at Conan. I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent, and my child needs five full days of learning immediately. As we approach the one-year anniversary of school closures due to COVID-19, I urge the board to move towards returning to full days with specials for all grade levels. Initially, we supported closing schools as the risk was too great. But a year later, we know more about this virus, and we see the price our children have paid, and it is just too steep. We appreciate the movement the board has made, first with hybrid schooling and now with fuller days, but it isn't enough. We have many families in our district living in crisis mode at the breaking point, just like mine. When we talk about the mental health of our children, we are not talking about whether they are happy or sad or bored with sitting in front of a computer. We are talking about real-life altering implications, depression, suicide, eating disorders, anxiety disorders, lost opportunities for early intervention for children with learning disabilities. The very last thing I want to do is uproot my children, causing them more trauma in order to get them back to full-day school immediately. It really puts the families in between a rock and a hard place. But as parents, we must ask ourselves, do we stay in a district where we are at the mercy of the school board who, from the purview of these board meetings, comes off as dysfunctional, lacking stability, and is not moved by the plight of our families? It is so hard to watch the trajectory of our district and the impact to our students and our families. I hope you are aware of the serious issue we have with the board needing to repair trust with parents. The only thing us parents can do is keep speaking out and demand transparency and continue to fight for our children. I hope to God you hear us, especially those fantastic and brave children we heard from tonight. Please vote to open the schools to full five days of learning with specials for all grades immediately. Our children are the most vulnerable members of our community, and they deserve better. We want to stay in this district, in the schools our children know, in the homes our children know, in this community. Please help us do that. I am one of 1,000 strong. Please hear my voice. And also, fantastic
Thirty seconds, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Corinne. Next, Megan Preston? If you're just calling in, star six. Okay, Dave, next. We can go back to Megan. Wendy?
Hi. Hi. My name is Wendy Nigerian. My family moved here a year ago from Birmingham Schools for the excellence I felt for Bloomfield Hills Schools. I myself am a product of Bloomfield Hills Schools. I have or had two children in the district at the beginning of the year, one in sixth grade, one in third grade. I have already pulled one of my children. They are attending a private school in the area. I also will have an incoming kindergartner, that class of 2034 we were talking about, who I would be more than excited to send to Bloomfield Schools if we are full-time, face-to-face, five days a week. However, because of my recent lack of trust and faith with this district's proactiveness, we did attend a kindergarten roundup just today for a private school in the area. I want to mention that I am a physician assistant. I can admit, I was anxious when I went back to work in September. But I wear a mask, and I wash my hands frequently, and I was, and I am okay. To Janelle's earlier point, we are all exhausted, but I realize I am essential. Teachers are essential. Face-to-face, full-time learning is essential. My children need face-to-face, full-time learning. I cannot and will not accept anything less than that. I am one of 1,000 strong. Please, please hear our voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next, Dave. Emily? Emily, you're on. Keep calling in. Press star six. Okay, Dave. Next person. Jennifer?
Hi, can you hear me? Hi.
Yes, we can hear you, Jennifer.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Jennifer Amori. I am a Bloomfield Hills parent, and my children need five full days of learning immediately. I have three children in the district, two at Wey Elementary, and one at BHMS. There are neighboring public schools in Oakland County that are open five full days. Oxford has been open full-time since August. A much larger district than us, Rochester, with 15,000 students, is now open full-time. Board of Education members, your role in the opening of our schools will go down in history as either one of two scenarios. One is that you will be remembered as the roadblock to opening our schools, or two, you will be remembered as those who trusted in our principals and administration to open our schools. It's time to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. It's time to show our children, we can work through issues, be leaders, use best practices learned from other schools that have opened and opened our schools. You were elected into your positions to serve the thousands of little voices that are known as our children. It's time to open up our schools full-time immediately. I am one of 1,000 strong. Please hear my voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Was that, Dave, was that Emily trying to get on?
It may have been. Emily, are you there?
I think Emily may have the web stream on, and she may be experiencing the delay of a couple of minutes.
Okay, who's next? If Emily jumps on, we'll let Emily speak. Yana? Yana, you're on. Is this part of the delay, Dave?
I can't speak to that, Paul. We told everybody to come into the meeting so they can track it live rather than listen to the stream. Otherwise, they're two minutes behind.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes, we can hear you. Yep.
Okay, great. My name is Yana Ben Ezra. I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent. We have six children between the ages of six and
Did we just lose her?
She muted herself.
Yana? Hey, Dave, we can go to the next one. When Yana comes back on, we could let her speak. I don't know if we lost her, or to Michelle's point, she muted herself inadvertently. Bethany? Okay, again, I don't know if this is the delay or if people are not star sixing, but we can keep going along. People can, you know, if we get them back, we could let them speak. Amanda, go.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm coming to you as a parent that actually pulled my kids out of Bloomfield Schools. So after a very challenging and disappointing virtual spring experience, oh, sorry, we made the tough decision to send our boys to private school. So we're incredibly grateful for the stability that private school has brought with almost a year of in-person learning. Both my kids have experienced just one quarantine situation that didn't have any spread beyond the individual who was originally infected. So to reiterate, the cases were contained, meaning that the students did not spread it to any other students or adults. I've remained engaged with what's happening with the district, and it's been really discouraging to witness how the families have been just failed over and over again. And I'm also afraid for the long term and how long it's going to take to rebuild and rebuild that trust and get the kids back on track. So we do want to stay with the Bloomfield community, but unless confidence is redeemed and quickly, because we need to make that decision by April 1st, we'll not be returning this fall. And if we're going to be doing two years in private, then we're just going to move out of the area altogether because there's really no point for us to be here. So I urge the district to provide full-time face-to-face for the families who need it. It's essential. If we don't start improving the face-to-face plan now, then what's going to change in the fall? I know the term, the new norm I know the term, the new normal, is being used all over to describe the pandemic life, but we can't apply this to our children's education, can we? So I'm coming to you as someone who has been very conservative throughout the pandemic, having a baby at the start of it, having grade school kids and having older parents. If I hadn't experienced firsthand how well and safe in-person school could work during the pandemic, I don't think I would have understood it or believed it that it was possible. So I urge you to please talk to others who are making the same tough choices in other districts. This is not what you guys signed up for when you, you know, want to be on the school board, and I completely understand that. So don't make decisions in a vacuum. The best leaders are the ones who are humble enough to know that they don't have all the answers and they see counsel from those who have gone before them. So just thank you for all that you're doing. I'm one of 1,000 strong, please hear my voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Janet?
Paul, this is Yana. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Yana. Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. I had a connection issue earlier. My name is Yana Ben Ezra. I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent. We have six children between the ages of six and 24, four of which are still in the district. I have a kindergartner, fifth grader, sixth grader, and eighth grader. My children need five full days of face to face school, not hybrid, not fuller schedule, but a full time schedule. The mental health of our kids trumps everything. Our kids need to be engaged with their peers in a full time, in-person school setting. In addition, kids with special needs need to be face to face. One of my kids has an IEP. It's extremely difficult for her to have sessions administered virtually. Not only does she yearn to be face to face, but she thrives being face to face. Let's think outside the box. Let's talk about what others haven't said yet. Don't let busting get in the way of district decisions. I will volunteer to forego my rights to use the bus to get our kids back in school full time. I will commit to driving my kids back and forth. I'm sure there are many other parents who would do the same. I, along with many other parents, don't care about the specifics of the spacing. Do whatever works. We trust that you'll do what's in the best interest of our kids, whether it be six feet, five feet, four feet, three feet, whatever it lands at, just to make it work. In closing, I want to talk about an email that we received from Superintendent Watson on February 18th, where he talks about community members, where he allowed community members to give feedback to the Board of Education. In his opening, he mentioned unity. Unity, let's talk about unity. When I first read the message, let's be honest, I was pissed. Unity? You talk about unity? Look at the Board of Education. Are you united? You want our community to be united? What about the Board of Education? Doesn't it start with the Board of Education being united? Why is our community split? There are two groups in the community. Those are for in-person education and those for virtual education. Let's make both options work. Let's talk to the parents of the virtual, who believe for virtual learning. What are they so angry about? Why don't they want the parents of in-person learning to go to school? Find out why they are so upset about it and let's get to a conclusion. Let's come to a conclusion. What about the parents that want in-person learning? What are they afraid of? Let's find out what they want to make it work. In closing, let's collaborate between the community. We're better than that. We have, we have the resources to make it work. I am, I am part of a community that is 1,000 strong. Please hear my voice.
Thank you. Next is Rocco.
Hi, I'm just going to give a quick intro for Rocco. I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent and my children need five days of learning. I have a second grade student, Rocco, and a rising kindergartner. The students and medical professionals that have spoken have provided the information needed for this board to decide to approve a five day full, five day, full day plan. Any day delayed is one too many. And Rocco, he'd like to provide you a little bit of info about his feelings on virtual learning.
When I use the computer, my eyes hurt. I miss my classmates. I have a hard time focusing at home. I can't learn easily at home. I'm disappointed that back into school has been delayed from March 5th to April 15th.
I'm one of 1,000 strong, please hear my son and my voice.
Thank you, Rocco. Thank you, Scott. Janet? Hi, Rocco. Janet?
Yep, I'm here. Hello?
Yep, yeah, we hear you, Janet.
Hi, everybody. My name is Janet Gendelman and I am a parent of two students at West Hills Middle School. My children are in fifth grade and seventh grade. Now is the time to bring all of our K to 12 children whose families want to make that choice back to school for five full days of in-person instruction. We are a small district with one high school and a per pupil funding allowance that is one of the highest in the state. Our class sizes are small and we can do this safely and we can do it before April 5th. During this school year, we have sat as parents and watched as our neighboring school districts in the tri-county area and around the country have made and implemented plans to open their doors for full time instruction without these contentious board meetings. Yet this board continued to say that every child in this country is in the same situation. This is simply not the case. These districts that are back full time and going to school sooner than April 5th are much larger than ours and they have fewer dollars to implement safety measures. Yet they have made their students' education a priority. They have allowed their school leaders to put plans into place and do the jobs that they were hired to do. So, Mr. Watson, I commend you and your team for continually presenting these plans throughout the year to put our kids back into school full time. I am also a public school teacher and I have taught at the high school level for the last 18 years. I see the daily struggles of our students as they're trying to manage this virtual and hybrid learning. The presentation that was just made in regards to giving the high school students a daily choice about coming to school is not going to prepare them to be productive and contributing members of our communities. I'm currently working in person with students and my district has released a plan to bring students back full time.
You have 30 seconds.
When students choose in-person learning, they must attend schools just like their teachers. Teachers are essential. Teaching in person is what we all signed up to do. Our kids are struggling. They need to be back in school five full days. Thank you.
Thanks, Janet. David? David Lipson? David Lipson? Hey, David, next. Carly Sheridan?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, Superintendent Watson, trustees, teachers, and community. I am a Bloomfield Hills parent and my children need five full days of in-person learning. I first want to thank the teachers for all of their hard work. As a colleague, I see you and I know what you have done this past year to educate and help our children learn. Your work has not gone unnoticed and we are forever grateful. But as a village, yes, a village that works together to take care of everyone, especially our children, it is time to return our children to what they truly know as school. Not part-time school, but five full days of in-person education. Please vote yes for a return to five full days tonight. We are thrilled and proud that Bloomfield Hills has created an incredible virtual academy. Every family should have a choice in how their children are educated. We, the 70% of the community, however, are asking for our choice to finally be honored. We have waited patiently. We have waited for studies, the science, a vaccine, and for case counts and percent positivity rates to decline. We are beyond there, yet we still do not have our buildings open for five full days of learning. Two weeks ago, three incredibly reputable, experienced, and motivated principals came on and told you that they are ready. They are ready to handle all students for five full days. You still chose to delay the increase for in-person instruction. Now is the time to listen to them and move forward. We do not need to argue miniscule details anymore. Every building is different. Every building has a different amount of children wanting to attend school five full days. We have the mitigation strategies. We have the filters. We have the vaccines. It is now time to let the administrators and teachers do their jobs. In a study released just this week by Michigan State University's Education Policy, results showed us that as of February 19th, 62% of public schools in Michigan offer a full five day in-person option. That means we in Bloomfield are part of the 38% who do not. How can one of the best districts in the state with the second highest per pupil funding continue to allow this? As an educator, I can attest to the negative impacts that this school year has had on our children. It would take me hours to have a conversation about this. But what I can tell you is that many children
Please.
are struggling mentally, physically, and academically. Our children have been patient. We cannot continue to leave them in this current school model. It is now time that we give them something back that is an essential part of their life. I am one of 1,000 strong, please hear my voice.
Thank you, Carly. Next, David. Is David Lipson back on or? If not, Elizabeth Glance?
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you, David.
Good. I just want to say that I want to be back five full days as soon as possible, like all of these other parents. I think it could not be more important for our kids and I am ashamed at times when I've seen what's gone on with this board, but I just really want to get these kids back in school. Please hear my voice. I am one of 1,000 strong. Please hear our voices. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Elizabeth? Okay, we go back to Elizabeth. David, next. Nicole?
And Don? Good evening. Don, this is Don Lau. This is my daughter Grace, who's a first grader in Bloomfield Virtual. We chose Bloomfield Virtual several months ago when we had to make that choice, not because we did not want to return to class. We very, very much wanted that. We chose the virtual option really because of the stability that it provided. For all of the reasons that all the other kids and parents have expressed, Grace wants to go back to class, needs to go back to class. We were very encouraged tonight about all the comments saying that all kids would have that option. But the plan that we heard tonight sounded a little bit different than things that we had heard in the last few weeks. So we would urge the board to clarify that immediately. Will all children, including the virtual children, have the option to go back to class full time? If that is not the intention, please clarify. And I would refer you to my more detailed comments that we submitted online where we make the case that really should be the choice for all children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Don. Dave, who's next? Teresa?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Teresa.
Good evening. I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent and my children need five full days of learning now. I have a fifth grader at BHMS and a third grader at Connet, who are both now in hybrid learning. We love our teachers. That's not the issue. What my family faces every day, every school day, is inequitable learning. Our friends that attend nearby private and in other public school districts are going to school five days a week, full time, and my kids are not. What we have is inequitable in comparison. This is blatantly unfair. March 15th is the best date to return these kids to school. Every single day counts. My family understands the risk of any spacing from three feet to six feet. We wear masks. We followed every rule ever imposed and we still welcome full time school. Do you know why? It's because learning at home is not working. It is not equitable. I am one of 1,000 strong requesting five full days of in-person learning. Please hear my voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Dan? Stan on? Star six, if you're calling in. Dave, next. Mary Ann?
Hi, I'm a Bloomfield parent that needs my child back for five full days of learning and my child needs this as soon as possible. I want to thank Pat, Superintendent Pat Watson, for such a great presentation and Dr. Lisa Klein for stating the latest data and the facts and a medical opinion on everything. I urge the board to please vote yes to Pat's presentation. Please do not scrutinize every detail of the plan. In-person school is safe. Those of us that chose in-person school from the beginning have known the risks and we are ready to go back. It's time to go back. Five full days. I'm one of 1,000 or more parents strong that want in-person school for five full days. Please hear my voice.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Next, Dave. Heidi?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Heidi.
Okay. I will say, as an attorney, I have appeared before countless judges in various courtrooms over the years. However, I have never been more moved and more intimidated to follow up anyone prior to listening to the sincere statements from these courageous students in the school district that spoke tonight. With that being said, I am a Bloomfield Hills parent and my children need to return to five full days of in-person learning. I have a daughter at Bloomfield Hills Middle School and I have two boys at Connet. I believe they need to return as soon as possible, as was proposed by this board's vote last meeting that was suddenly amended and changed from March 15th to now April 5th. I'm concerned that April 5th will float away and soon linger on. And I am also concerned about a plan for the fall and whether that will occur as well. Unfortunately, we are looking into other options, which I hate so much because we truly love Connet. We love Bloomfield Hills School District. We believe it's the best teachers and staff that anyone could possibly have. We support our teachers. I know they have worked tirelessly to do the best that they can for our children and have gone above and beyond, including responding to frantic messages over the weekend about not being able to find the link for this assignment or that assignment. And they have been extremely responsive and helpful, which I know is not part of their actual job that they have signed up to do. I see the daily struggle I witness with my children, especially my elementary kids, every single day, every afternoon, every Wednesday. And the lack of care for their changed and unsafe bus stop is equally as disturbing. I echo the concerns raised by others tonight regarding my children going from loving school to hating school.
You have 30 seconds.
And these are children that are in second and third grade. They should love school and now they hate it. I am one of 1,000 I am one of 100, well, we will soon be 100,000 plus, but currently 1,000-plus strong. Please hear my voice. I hope and pray tonight is very clear, and this detailed plan that has been set forth will be finally sufficient to carry this board's support. Thank you, and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Heidi. Megan Preston? Star six, if you're calling in? Dave next? Danielle?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Danielle.
Great, all right. So I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent, and I have two kids, both at West Hills Middle School, one in fourth grade and one in fifth grade. I'd like to start by saying that I appreciate all the hard work that has been invested to keep our children safe. I'd like to personally thank our fantastic teachers who go above and beyond in our current paradigm. And hats off really to the Superintendent Watson and his team for pulling together a thoughtful plan that puts our children's education and their safety first by following recommendations by many medical authorities, which include recommendations for returning our children to the classroom setting and doing it as soon as possible. We need five full days in-person school. I say this as a parent of two children who have immensely missed the rich educational environment that being in the classroom brings. They are sad on Wednesdays, struggle with asynchronous environment in the afternoons, and wonder why their friends in neighboring districts in private schools get to return. Their academic skills and mental health have suffered. I watched them depressed about school, depressed about their loss of social interactions, and missing the routine and academics that they should be offered. I am also an emergency medicine physician who has served on the front line in this pandemic. I understand the science that currently exists. I keep daily tabs on the prevalence and know firsthand what the risk is. I know we are all on the same side of the coin in prioritizing our children's safety and their education. I know everyone listening on this call and on video in front of me wants the best for our children in our district. You have created a virtual learning academy for those families who feel they aren't comfortable with the current risk profile. Given what we know, our current prevalence in our community, and the access to vaccination, it is time to make our children's full day of education essential. It is time to get them back into the rich learning environment where they can socialize and learn within their classroom community. I feel fortunate to have our children in the school district and want them to stay in the school district, but they need and deserve full-time school. I know executing this plan will be challenging, but I believe we owe it to our children to have five full days of comprehensive education. Please decide tonight that our children's mental health and academic progress is in fact essential. I appreciate your time, and I hope to communicate some good news to my children in the morning. Please hear our voices.
Thank you, Danielle. Next, David? Brenda? Brenda West? Okay, next, David? Joel? Joel Kirk? Okay, next, David? We can go back if they come back on. Angela Gouda? Star six, if you're calling in? Angela? David next? Kristen Campbell?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name's Kristen Campbell, and I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent. I have a third grader and a first grader at Conant Elementary. My children need five full days of in-person learning immediately. Thank you, Pat, for bringing back a plan for five full days of learning that now includes a plan for high schoolers as well. While I fully appreciate the work that has been done, I strongly suggest that the board considers sending the kids back to school on March 15th. Howard, you introduced a motion in the last meeting that moved back the start-to-school date to April 5th. I urge you to consider making a similar motion this meeting to move the start date back to March 15th. There is a plan, so let's accelerate it. Let's get these kids back to school on March 15th. I urge you, sorry, I urge you to listen to the kids and the parents that have spoken today. Vote yes for the five-full-day plan and get us back to school, ideally on March 15th rather than April 5th. I am one of 1,000 strong. Please hear my voice.
Thank you.
President Colin, can you remind everyone that we should be...
I didn't hear that, Michelle.
Or did you...
Sorry, Michelle, I didn't hear that. You broke up. Your connection went bad for a second there. Do you want to say that again? Or not? JJ?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, wonderful, great. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say, you know, I've sent several emails to the board and to Pat. And as a naturopath and a detox practitioner and a health coach, a certified health coach, I listen to a lot of doctors from all over the world every day. I've sent so many links. There's been so many studies that show, and every single one of them is saying the same thing. The kids need to go back to school. They should be in school. There's no reason the kids shouldn't be in school. Every doctor, pediatrician, naturopath, integrative, even Western medicine doctors from all over the world, they're in unison with the CDC. So as a parent, it's so, it's so hard. And we're all in, we're all in all these wait lists. Every private school has a wait list a mile long because of Bloomfield Hills Schools and what they're doing to the kids, which is criminal. It's, I'm sorry, it's, it's beyond, there's no logic. I don't know what kind of junk science that some of the board seems to be following, but the truth is there. The studies have been done. The pediatricians have spoken. And we feel beyond helpless with like, hey, we, we supported these people. We voted you in because we wanted you, we thought you were going to be a voice for our children and supporting our children and getting our children to school. And what they're, in my opinion, and in many, many people's opinions, I feel the board is there for our kids. You're not there trying to protect the entire community. That's not your job. Your job is to help get our kids into school where they belong, according to the CDC and every other expert out there. You can't find an expert that tells you, no, it's too dangerous. Keep them out of, they're, they don't even exist anymore. And in fact, in some parts of the world, they're now even starting to ban masks, which don't work, because they're saying, hey, these kids need to have their facial interactions. They need to see expressions and, and have that bonding and have that
You have 30 seconds.
So I'm just asking, enough with the junk science. Stop politicizing this. Just be there for our kids. Get our kids back to school. Get our kids back to school where they go, because at this point, we're losing people. People are trying to move out of the community. Our, our housing prices are going to plummet. I mean, this isn't just about, this is like such a huge trickle. Do it for
Your time is up.
interest of our children. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing before we go to the next comment. Please note that public comment you're directing at the board, not any particular person, so please remember that as you're directing public comment. Christina, you're next? Christina Rayburn? Okay, we'll go back.
Sorry, you think I would know?
Okay.
Virtual teaching, unmute myself.
That's okay, Christina, we hear you.
Um, sorry. So I am a teacher at East Hills Middle School. I teach visual arts. And, you know, it's awful having to teach this way online. It's been very difficult. I, I miss my classroom. I miss my students. I miss my colleagues. I want nothing more than to go back to school and teach again. However, when this year started, I, despite that, I considered taking a leave of absence to protect myself and my family because of the scariness of the, of the disease, because I see so many students, specialist teachers. The plan initially was to keep us home for the year because of the amount of students that we come into contact with. I see every fourth grader, every fifth grader, and a very large portion of the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders that walk through the door to East Hills throughout the week. Hundreds of students. It's not like a general ed teacher who sees 30 students a day or even, you know, 90, 60, 90 students a day, and they see those same students all week. I see hundreds. So I felt genuinely reassured when I was told that I would not be returning to in-person learning this school year. By choice because of that, my husband and I have invested a significant amount of time and money setting up a home classroom so that I could do the best job that I could to teach my students and do a good job with that. And that was my choice. I mean, I'm not, you know, blaming anybody for that. That just happened to be what we did. I literally feel very blindsided by this new plan at this point. I, I literally had a meeting with my administration yesterday, and no mention was made of elective teachers going back to full-time at all. And I just happened to see the email, like during the school board meeting. And, you know, it just feels a little bit like we were let, let, we were, we were blindsided by this a bit. And I heard mentioned that this change was due to some of the other special teachers wanting to go back. And I totally get that. And like, I think that that's great and fine. But honestly, nobody asked me. And there were no meetings about this. There was no survey sent to the specialist teachers asking us how we felt about going back or if we thought it was a good idea to go back. And this plan just seems to have changed out of nowhere with no notice.
You have 30 seconds.
So all I know is, I, I still have that question that with specialist teachers, and me and my colleagues have seen so many students every week, what is going to be done to protect us and our families when over the course of the week, we see so many students in the building? Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Noah Cohen? Noah, are you there? Next, David? Sarah Lipson?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm a Bloomfield Hills parent, and my child needs five full days of in-person learning. I hope you're all as impacted as I am hearing these comments and especially the students tonight. Many of you do not have students who apparently are struggling. It was weirdly refreshing to hear that my child is not alone in these severe struggles that he is facing every day with the current model. That being said, it is utterly heartbreaking to hear that he's not alone. Superintendent Watson, thank you for this plan. To the Board of Education, tonight you've heard from medical professionals, students, and parents pleading to approve this plan for five full days of in-person learning. I think we're all hopeful that you will do so. That being said, several other parents have spoke earlier and urged you to move this plan forward to an earlier date. If logistics were fine-tuned enough to propose a 315 Fuller Day Plan, and this plan is more thorough and in-depth, we really need to understand why this can't be pushed forward. An amendment to push back the date to four or five, specifically stating that nine days was not that big of a deal. I hope you all understand after hearing these students, nine days is a very big deal. The last meeting, the plan was proposed. The union was strongly represented, which led to the amendment for the postponement and ultimately not to approve the 315 start date. I urge you to use the same compassion, logic, and empathy that you had during the last meeting after listening to so many people plead to push the start date up. You are elected officials, and taken from your board policy, it states, "Your duty is to serve the interests of the school district and the entire school community." You have a letter in your hand, a website at your desktop, and have heard, I don't even know from how many voices at this point representing the school community. I am one of 1,000 strong. Please hear my voice.
Thank you, Sarah. Sandra Berry?
Hi, my name is Sandra Berry. And I have a high schooler, a middle schooler, and an elementary schooler in the district. I am urging the board tonight to vote yes for Superintendent Watson's plan to, for five full days for in-person learning. I also urge him and the principals at the high school to look into actual doing in-person learning instead of having students sit on their computer in their classroom. My high school reports that the teachers often don't even make eye contact with the students in the room. Since they have 25 students online and only five students in the room, they often don't even look up from their computers. So I am glad to hear that the plan is for five, to return for five full days. I am one of 1,000, and I hope that you hear our voices tonight and vote yes.
Thank you, Sandra. Mike?
I'm here.
Okay, Mike?
Good evening. Hi. My name is Mike Laura. I am, I have three children in this district. And I've spoken at the last couple of meetings, and I've had people ask me, "You sound angry." And my response to them is, "Well, that's because I am angry." And I think what's, what you're seeing here is a lot of other angry parents. And I think what has been abundantly clear after listening to everybody is that this community, your constituents who voted you in, are extremely disappointed in how this board has conducted itself. It has been an unmitigated disaster. Other people want to be polite about it, maybe tiptoe around it. This board has been a failure. You have failed these children. Two weeks ago, you heard from a handful of, of teachers regurgitating union talking points, and you immediately bent to their will. So why can't you do that today? You changed the date arbitrarily on a whim because you heard from a few concerned teachers. Well, now you're hearing from 1,000 concerned parents and children who are asking you to go back to March 15th. So if you think we're going to pat you on the back for going back in April, you're not going to get that from me. If you can change it just as quickly for them, then why can't you change it just as quickly now for us tonight? You called it a compromise back then. Well, I'm done compromising. I'm done compromising my children's health. I'm done compromising my children's education. I'm done hearing from this board. All they say is no, 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 finding a way to say no. I am done with this board. If you have any hope of restoring even 1% of the faith of this community that you've lost, then you will find a way to do what's right and do what all your constituents are telling you to do and get them back to school March 15th. Stop being an extended mouthpiece of the union. And respectfully to the, to the teacher, and, and they called, they spoke earlier, we, we're blindsided too, so I know how you feel. We were thrown changes without notice too. So trust me, we know how you feel. And if you have spent money on, on a, a classroom at your home, maybe the board can find a few bucks out of the $200 million we gave them to reimburse you for it.
You, you have 30 seconds.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Nicole Hill? Dave next? William Clark? William, are you there? Dave next. Natalia.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm Natalia Venezia. I'm in fifth grade at West Hills Middle School. I want to go back to school full-time, face-to-face. I miss my friends and teachers. I am one of a thousand strong. Please hear my voice.
Thank you Natalia. Aiden.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Aiden. Dave, we can go back to Aiden. Benjamin.
Can you hear me? This is Benjamin speaking. Can you hear me? Excellent. Thank you board for taking this opportunity to hear all of our voices. I'm one of a thousand strong parents that are asking for you guys to allow our children to live their lives. I have five children in the, in the uh, school. One who is elected to move out of the high school and go to a private school. It saddens me and brings me to a lot of pain to watch my sixth and seventh grader cry about how much they love their district and how they're gonna be leaving the district because of our incapacity to understand that we need to put our children first. We have another problem with our second grader, who's been a love and a joy to the district and comes every day excited. Coming home after the, the half a day that he had the opportunity to go to school and say to me, Dad, is this how life is gonna be? Are we gonna be going to school and not seeing our friends and being sequestered in our homes? This is not a learning environment. This is not how we decided to move our kids to this district. This is not why we're in this district. We moved to this district because we thought that this is a board that leads us to a better education. We need to put our students first and never let up on safety. I own a prominent restoration company in the area. We have tools and methods to help protect the kids, protect the teachers, but we haven't had discussions about how we can lend that value to help you guys. But instead, we keep providing more time, more time, more time, and delay, and delay, delay, delay. And we use science behind these delays. Show us the science that you guys are making decisions on. We've elected you, and we're asking you. There's thousands of people telling you and asking you to consider bringing that date back and move our kids back to in-person learning. Enough is enough. People that are, don't wanna be in school don't need to be there. The people that wanna be there, need to be there. Our kids are falling behind. They're not learning enough. They're behind the curve. We came to this school district to be and give our children the opportunities that they deserve. We've also voted each and every one of you into position, and we've also voted to give this school district more money from our pocket, so our children can have the best possible education that we can give them. And now I'm, I am considering taking all of my children out of your, our district, and one who's already left because we're showing them that we don't have the capacity to make educated decisions.
You have thirty seconds.
And I thank you guys for the opportunity to speak today, and I hope you guys hear all of our one of one thousand voices that are on these calls. Thank you.
Thank you Benjamin. Aiden.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you Aiden.
Um, hi, my name is Aiden Venezia. I am a rising freshman, and I wanna go back to school face-to-face because I miss my social life, and it's bad for my health to stare at a screen all day. Last year, I was a straight A student. Now I'm lucky to be in the high C's and low B's section. Thank you. I am always. I am one of a thousand strong. Please hear my voice.
Thank you Aiden.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you Kaylee.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kaylee Pitts, a tenth grade student at BHHS. Getting five full days of school is crucial to my success in education. I know the risk of going back in, and I'm willing to take it. I've already missed out on so many opportunities and don't feel like I'm, I'm learning at my full potential. Remote learning is causing me to become less motivated, which has caused my grades to plummet. Where, where I once was an A student, looking forward to learning, I am now a low B student, dreading getting on a Zoom call to try and wrap my brain around my Algebra II and chemistry work. Since we have been in hybrid, I have immediately seen a difference in my effort. But going to, going into school two days a week is just not enough. I hope you strongly consider my opinion, as I have experienced the difficulties firsthand. Please vote in favor for five full days of in-person learning. My parents and I are four of one thousand strong. Please hear my voice. Thank you.
Thank you Kaylee. Pazia.
Okay. Paul, as a note, I'm going, Paul, I'm going back through the list of the people who did not when you called on them, so I'm working through that.
Okay. Emily. Star six.
I'm here. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Hey Emily. Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Okay. Hello, I am a Bloomfield Hills parent with a sixth grader and a second grader. I am also an alumni of Bloomfield Hills Schools. I am in full support of five full days of learning. My children currently attend hybrid and are both struggling in different ways. My sixth grader is failing most of her classes despite having private tutoring and attending a pod. What this has done to her self-confidence is truly heartbreaking. I had a very happy child who is now very depressed and has to see a psychologist. My second grader struggles with her asynchronous portions of her day and is frequently frustrated, sad and crying. If we fail to open full-time now, we will be at a great disadvantage as a district. All the private schools in many districts very similar to ours have been fully opened successfully for the entire year. And now, many, many more will be fully open come March fifteenth. What is being provided for our kids doesn't even compare to this. Our kids will undoubtedly be left behind. The failure of this district is going to start showing more and more as stu, in the students as time goes on, not just academically, but also emotionally and mentally. Let's turn this around while we still can and repair this damage. A year is absolutely too long, and school needs to be considered essential. I ask you today to support five full days of learning, and if you're unable to do this, I have no choice but to pull both of my children out of the district, because if I don't, then shame on me. And teachers feel blindsided. Well, we've been blindsided this entire year thinking at, during the summer, we were gonna get a full-time or, or online option, and we have been blindsided every single meeting. Um, I thank you for your attention, and we are proudly one thousand strong, and please hear my voice. And real quick, I have one more voice before she goes to bed.
Hi, I am a second grader in Collins School. My name is Juliana, and I sometimes feel stressed when I have online school. When we start to going back in school for a half-day, I was very excited. And I'm very happy to see all my friends, but now it's been, been very hard to do a half-day. And I think we should go back to school fully, because a lot of people are having a hard time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Emily. Um, Nazar. Christina. Next Dave. Kelly. Next Dave. We did Megan. Next Dave. Bethany. We do Bethany. Next Dave. Joel. Next Dave. We did Angela. Next Dave. We did Kristen. Next Dave. I believe we did Kristen. William Clark. Next Dave.
You know, bringing up, there's a bunch of people trying to get in. Hang on. So like, give me a few moments so I can try to figure out who they are.
Fine. I see someone here.
Yeah, I.
She's coming in the room Dave.
You'll have to call in Paul. I do not know who they might be.
What are we doing Dave? Do we have a?
Yeah, so whoever, um, so let's just pick one of our callers who just uh, joined the meeting. If you can go ahead and speak and say your name, please.
Press star six to come off, unmute. Or not? Dave, do we still have, do we still have people? How many people we still have?
Give me a few moments and let me look through this. Sean, are you seeing anybody else as well?
No, I, I don't see anybody else. I don't, I think we've caught everyone that was on the list.
Thank you.
All right, with that, if, if no one else is there, no one else is in the waiting room, I'm gonna um, close public comment and go to nine eighty board business. Can I get a motion? David.
I move the Board of Education to approve full-day, five-day-a-week return to in-person instruction for K-12, Wing Lake and Prep with an effective date of April fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Right, support?
Support.
Any discussion? Lisa.
Thank you Paul. I find myself once again in the uncomfortable position of having to make an important decision affecting the lives, education and livelihood of many. As much as the circumstances were unforeseen, this is what I signed up for. From the beginning, I felt that children, that I felt that the way children are educated should be decided by their parents or caregivers. Limiting choices should only be done for matters of public health or safety, and to me, the concerns must be compelling enough to limit this basic parental right. From March two thousand twenty, I've looked at data and recommendations of the county, state and federal government for guidance. With so much unknown about a virus that we've never seen before, I tried my best to follow reputable sources that were objective. I made each and every decision weighing all relevant factors, and I voted in ways that supported uh, the indicators provided by those factors. The objective of everyone in this district has always been to provide the best education for our students that was possible under the circumstances. Our educators uniformly agree that although a new frontier in education has arrived, the best education we can offer our students is in-person. In keeping with our promise to make objective decisions based on the most local data available, I feel comfortable supporting a full return to in-person option for our K-12 students. The Bloomfield metrics have been shockingly accurate. I'm indebted to my kindred spirit, a parent who went back in hindsight, applying the safe threshold set by the CDC, and for fun, calculated that absent mandatory state closures, we made the right call when choosing virtual and hybrid every single time. Much has been said about trust and how you get it. I don't think you get it. I think you earn it. You earn it by being honest and transparent. So here it is. Oakland County is in orange. We have, however, we've always used percent positive as one factor, while Oakland County hovers on the threshold of yellow. We are on a fourteen-day downward trajectory. We are in a very comfortable position with hospital capacity and death rates are decreasing significantly. There is statistical evidence that children do not spread the virus as quickly as adults, and schools have demonstrated the ability to control outbreaks in their communities with mitigation factors that include less than six feet of distancing. Perhaps the greatest mitigation factor of all, which didn't exist when districts or counties set metrics months ago, is the fact that by the end of March, uh, we have learned from the Oakland County Health Department by the end of March that we can guarantee all teachers in the county who want a vaccine will have had their first dose, at least their first. Regarding the plan, it makes sense to me. To be honest, once we decided to forego six-foot distancing, I questioned the logic of anything other than a full return. In addition, the fewer time and schedule changes we introduce, the easier it will be for our students, families and staff to adjust. As always, I empathize with the emotions connected with this issue. Having read over four hundred linked comments in the last few days, I know there are several varied concerns and fears. All are valid and all are important, and they should be shared freely and respectfully with us. I hope that regardless of what works best for individual families, incidentally, mine is split. One of my students is a hundred percent virtual, the other goes in-person as often as possible. I hope we can appreciate that not everyone shares our beliefs, our opinions, our needs or our choices. Like many of you, I too moved to Bloomfield decades ago for this, mostly for the schools. But what makes great schools is a great community, and what makes a great community is diversity of perspectives and thoughts. We will only achieve that if we respect those who disagree with us. I echo the, the sentiments expressed by many in our community and hope that we remain this great community that we all chose to be part of by remembering that in challenging times, we need each other more than ever.
Thanks Lisa Howard.
Uh, Mr. President, may I, I ask the superintendent some questions?
We're in discussion right now. You could ask, yes, you could ask the superintendent some questions.
Thank you sir. Um, Mr. Superintendent, earlier this week, you and I had a conversation about trying to accelerate the April fifth date to March fifteenth. Uh, a number of days have passed. Um, I'd like to ask you again, given uh, where we are today, is it, is it feasible, is it possible to move the April fifth date uh, earlier to, into somewhere into March?
At this point, it is not. If this passes tonight, we need to allow people to register for in-person or virtual the first week of March. At that point, we then need to change schedules and bill schedules depending on what people are going to do. the first week of March. At that point, we then need to change schedules and bill schedules depending on what people are going to do. So you may have students that have signed up for virtual that decide, I want to come back and be in person now. You're going to have those that are in person to decide, I want to go virtual. So this also can include hiring additional staff depending on how things shake up. If nine students come back to Coned in second grade, they can't all go in the same classroom. Yet we can't pull out the Bloomfield virtual teacher, which means we need to hire another second grade teacher for Kona as an example. Two weeks ago, when I gave the presentation, March 15th was the date based on the window we were going to have allowing people to move from in-person and virtual. That window is since shifted. So that is why I proposed the April 5th date.
Okay, so that the, uh, public comments were saying the, you know, we should open school for, uh, full five days in the earliest possible time and you're saying the earliest possible time is April 15th?
I'm saying April 5th.
April 5th, April 5th, excuse me. Misstatement. Okay.
And I, and I would, uh, can I finish, please?
I'm, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
The last week in March is spring break. So that week is not available to us. If we could do it sooner, we would do it sooner. And again, I understand as a parent the frustration that everyone has. But we are going to move as quickly as we can to accommodate the requests of parents. One thing that will, there, there, you know, we look at moving it up, you wouldn't have the opportunity to move. And how is that fair? Right? That's not fair to everyone. If you picked virtual, you can't move. If you picked in person, you can't move. This is it. But we want to give everyone the opportunity. And so that's going to take a little bit of time.
All right. Any more questions?
One, one other quick question. Real, real quick. In, in the write-up, you say that people can move from in-person to, to Bloomfield virtual. Is it possible to go the other direction at this point if someone and, and one of the public comment people said that they picked Bloomfield virtual, but now would like to go back to in-person or go to in-person? Is that feasible?
Yes, that is feasible. And that's part of the scheduling process that I'm trying to make sure I'm as clear as possible. So if you are currently in Bloomfield virtual and your wish to, your wish is to return to in-person, then we will schedule it that way. If you're currently in-person and you'd like to go to Bloomfield virtual, then we'll schedule it that way. And we're giving people a full week. This, please understand, this is a big decision for people, right? They need to have conversations in their home about what they want to do. What is going to be best for them? Are, do they have elderly people living with them? Do they have immunocompromised, uh, students? And, you know, they're making a decision that way. This is a huge decision. And I wish we could give longer than a week because that may not be enough time for some people, but anything after that would extend the scheduling out. So again, once the parents have made their decision of what they feel is best for their students, then we need to get together with all the district administrators and start building new schedules. Do we need to hire more staff? How quick can we onboard them? Right? So there's a lot of things with that. The transportation, I appreciate the parents being, you know, willing to drive and I would be grateful for those who can and that's great. If you can't, we'll have bus transportation. The scheduling is one of the big pieces. And then we also need to be good stewards of everyone's money, right? People have invested in this community through taxes, through the bond. We don't want to buy 500 tables and only need 20 tables. And we won't have a final count until after that first week of registration to know how many people are really going to be in person. And then we can finalize our purchases.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Greatly appreciated.
All right, so we had a motion, a second, no more discussion, call for a vote. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Seba?
Yes.
I mean, yes, motion passes seven oh. Thanks, Pat. Um, thanks to you and your team. Okay, we will go now to consent agenda. Johnson?
And, and also thank you so much to all the people who took the time to give public comment. It was greatly appreciated.
Yes, thank you to our community for coming out tonight and the students for giving public comment. Yes, I agree, Howard. Um, with that, we will go to consent agenda. Jonathan?
All right, I got it over here. Um, I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from the regular meeting of January 28th, 2021. Request to approve minutes from a special meeting of February 1st, 2021. Request to approve minutes from a special meeting board work session of February 4th, 2021. Request to approve minutes from the special meeting board work session of February 9th, 2021. Request to approve minutes from the study session of February 11th, 2021. Request to approve minutes from a special meeting and closed session of February 18th, 2021. Request to approve monthly financial reports. I move that the Board of Education approve the financial reports as presented. Uh, I move, uh, request to approve dispersment reports. I move that the Board of Education approve the dispersment reports as presented and it's like two more. Uh, I move that the Board of Education award bid number C2103 Boot Center Pilot project to the following. General Trades ML Shaner $82,400. Mechanical, contrast mechanical $118,000. Electrical, EL electrical $28,700. Total, uh, total direct cost of this bid is $229,100. With the addition of contingency, general conditions, construction management, and architect fees, the total award is $276,046.85. This project will be funded by the sinking fund. And finally, uh, request to approve HR actions. I move the Board of Education to personnel actions as presented.
Thanks, John.
Support.
Thank you. Howard? Howard?
Wait, before you, before you go, on the January 25th, um, meeting minutes, um, all board cabinet members um, were, um, recorded with the exception of secretary. So we can add that to the, um, January minutes.
Thanks, Michelle. Yes, we can add that back. Okay, we have that. Um, to add back, we have support. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Seba?
Yes.
I mean, yes, consent passes. General discussion, mid-year budget presentation. Tina?
Tina, still there? Saying Dave is queuing me up. Uh, so as, as part of our normal budget revision or amendment process, we typically come to the board, um, as early as the end of January or sometime in February. We did do a December special amendment, but that focus was really on significant changes to key revenue items, thankfully in a positive direction as well as COVID funding and some COVID costs. This particular amendment is our normal process where we take a deeper look at, at different areas of the budget, both revenue and expenditures. We are required by law to have the board adopt a budget for our general fund as well as all of our special revenue funds. So all of those are being amended this evening. Uh, the Novus board package has all of the details and I am going to present the highlights in these slides. So, uh, next slide, please, Dave. So first on the general fund, next slide. Um, I always like to remind all of us, the general fund is our primary operating fund. It would be like our main checkbook at home. It accounts for the district's core operations, including general education and special education that are our non-center programs, uh, preschool through 12th grade and beyond, including up to 26 years old for special education students. Next slide, Dave. So funding sources for the general fund, almost three quarters of the general fund's revenue is based on that per pupil funding, uh, called foundation allowance per pupil, which is just over $12,000 per pupil here in, in Bloomfield Hills. Multiplied by enrollment and the enrollment, that headcount, it's actually a full-time equivalent, um, count. And the general fund receives the general fund portion and then there are some center program students where we send the money into a, a separate account into the center program fund. So the state's budgeting process, um, actually determines this amount per pupil annually. Some of that foundation allowance is funded by the state, some locally, and I'll have a slide on that in a moment. Uh, right now, the, the state budget process is just kicking off with the governor's budget. And now over the next several months, we watch as it goes through the Senate and the House developing their budgets. And then we always hope to know what that amount is, um, by the time the board needs to approve a budget before July 1st. But because the state's year end is September 30th, that did not happen last year and obviously there was a lot going on. And right now, we're not anticipating to know. So we'll do our best to estimate that as we develop next year's budget. Next slide. Um, for the general fund, we start out with that original budget, which is the one that was approved last June, in June of 2020, before the year started, and there were many variables and unknowns at that time. Um, actually, we were expecting a pretty significant per pupil reduction in funding. Uh, but then as it all turned out, uh, by August and actually the last day of September, the state's year end, um, it was good news, uh, that we weren't going to have that reduction and we remained flat on the foundation as well as receiving some additional money to account for or cover a lot of the COVID costs that we've been experiencing. So that led to going from the original budget column to the December budget column, a significant difference in the bottom line. So that fund balance as a percent of expenditures is very important and it is something we measure because of the board policy. And the board policy, uh, states that at 20%, that's like a little bit of a, the cautionary light where we start talking about what we might have to do to keep it balanced and in line with policy. 15% is the floor and we are currently, at least, far from the 15%. Um, and the December and then the last column, which is why I'm here this evening, the mid-year budget, uh, is actually not very different from December. The bottom line is still, uh, 200 and some thousand dollars. Uh, not too many changes, um, even in revenue and expenditures and about 22% fund balance. So so far, so good this year. Next slide, please, Dave. The mid-year revisions, I typically do a crosswalk and there's usually a lot more to say or a couple of slides on this. But because the net change is not much, I'm just pointing out some of the, the revenue items that we had variances on that we've now amended, uh, which is an improvement of about $600,000. But on the expenditure side, we actually had, uh, two, we had more expenditures in total than in December by about 600,000. So we end up net at about $232,000 of surplus this year, projected through the end of this year. And we'll still be watching all of the costs, including what we expect to be a, a bit more PPE, uh, based on tonight's decision. So as we move towards the end of the year, there'll be a final amendment that I will bring to the board and update, uh, the committee accordingly in April and May and then June for the final recommendation. Next slide, Dave. Uh, just a few pie charts on the revenue sources, uh, looking at 47% that is state-funded, that's the largest source, and 42 local. Sometimes that gets a little curious because I said about three quarters is foundation. So Dave, if you go to the next slide, I like to use the next one instead. Uh, we're on the left side, I show the foundation allowance, which is comprised of state and local monies of 71% this year. The reason the percent's a little bit lower than we normally see is that orange, 14% all the way on the left. The state in different sections of state funding did provide monies back in August uh, to help address the costs that school districts have just with COVID, PPE, uh, Bloomfield virtual, uh, this year, those types of things. So the mathematical equation reduced the percent for the foundation allowance this year because of that. We don't expect to get that type of bump in funding next year. And then breaking it out between local and state, that's usually a little bit closer, but, um, you can see what is coming locally through our taxpayers, both residents as well as non-residential property and then the state portion. Next slide, Dave. Uh, general fund expenditures by object. So as we would expect, our largest costs are our staff. Um, and that is in the blue, about 83%. Purchased services, um, does include our outsourced services, uh, like, uh, custodial. And then, uh, the bulk though, as I said, is 83% and it's about 80 million of our total budget that are our staffing costs. Next slide. So the last slide I have here are special revenue funds. So the special revenue funds, the detail is in the board package. It includes the International Academy, which we are the fiscal agent for a group of 10 districts that participate uh, at the campus, the Oakma Campus located in Bloomfield Hills. And then the center program is for the county center programs, Wing Lake, as well as our deaf and hard of hearing, uh, programs. We are the center operator. There is a separate fund, uh, that accounts for that activity for the county. And the Recreation and Community Services Fund, um, I think, you know, especially in this year of COVID, we know, uh, revenues have been down, but everyone has made an effort in our, with our recreation team and certainly you saw the activity at the, many have seen the activity at the farm, um, doing as much as we can to provide, provide activities for our community and our residents. Food Services is another special revenue fund and, uh, Hills Activities is new based on some accounting rule changes. And then we have co-curricular endowment. So all of those details were in the board package. Um, and if you go to the last, the very last slide, Dave, not too many numbers here, just a lot of snapshots because our website does have a tremendous amount of information depending on what you're looking for. Right on the homepage, in the very upper left-hand corner, there's a transparency icon. Clicking on that will get you to most everything on the left, um, including some financial indicator scores. And, uh, right now, that amended budget shows December because our board hasn't approved it yet and I expect us to stay at an indicator score of zero, um, which, uh, is, may not be logical, but that is actually the best score that you can get. Um, 10 is not good. So, uh, we've been doing quite well managing and even managing during the times that, uh, we've had to look for ways to balance that budget. With that, um, Mr. Cohen, I will entertain any other questions that we have.
If anyone has any questions or comments, raise your hand or put a question mark in the chat. Jennifer?
Hi, um, thank you, Tina. The numbers are more favorable than we anticipated a few months ago, right? Um, so my question is, is that mostly because of federal CARES contributions? Or is it the, um, formula of pupil allowance that the state configured? Um, what, what do you attribute the, um, you know, more positive trajectory to?
So the, the key reasons, the number one reason is we originally were projecting back in June, a $700 per pupil reduction in foundation allowance funding, that main funding. That did not occur. In fact, it just remained flat with the foundation allowance. And then on top of that, the state, from state funds, provided money for, for us, $350,000 or $350 per pupil in August for this year. Um, there was a reduction for last year of 175, but it didn't come out of our, it, the foundation per pupil. So that way it wasn't permanent. Um, so net-net, uh, we ended up gaining money from the state. And then the federal money is an excellent point because the federal funding we've received to date allowed us to cover the additional costs that we've had, uh, for the, for the most part. And there's a lot of details that I've gone over with FFLA with a summary of COVID funding and costs. And I am waiting for a bit more on CARES Act 2, uh, which has not been formally approved to be released yet, but then I'll have another update for FFLA and I'll share it with the entire board, the spreadsheet of all of the funding you're asking me about, the federal funding as well as the costs and maybe costs that weren't covered by anything that we've been able to absorb.
I, I really appreciate your always conservative estimations. That's very nice. That's very nice.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any other questions? With that, can we make a motion to move the student report? I know it's 10:30, not saying that, from D to B?
Yes. I move, I move that the general discussion item D be moved to B, so the students can report now and go to bed.
Second.
Okay, so moved. We're okay on that, so moved. Paul, Erin, you still here?
Yeah.
Hello.
Hello.
Maybe the bedtime's a lot later than this, but we're conscious of your time. So thank Paul and Erin for sticking, just sticking with us for a couple of hours. Paul, Erin, I know you want to give a report. Go ahead.
So I'll share my screen with, with this. Okay. So I will discuss the start time and the face to face learning in the context of Bloomfield Hills High School. And then Erin will touch on the context of IA and also talk about kind of like testing and assessment methods. And we speak on behalf of the members of the advisory council. So as the policy that was just passed, isn't it, the policy's in accordance with student feedback regarding start times. And many high school students have advocated for these start times that, Bloomfield Hills High School are 9:25 a.m. start time. And IA, there has been some advocacy for having that later start time at 9 a.m. And we have received, both the Board of Education, Superintendent Watson, and us as the advisory council, have received a number of communications from students, mostly via email, on the importance of this 9:25 a.m. for BHHS, the importance of the start time. And there have been pretty much three main threads that have run throughout these responses. The first thing, that the earlier start time allows, improves physical and mental health of students by allowing for a healthier sleep schedule and for allowing students to get ready in the morning and have breakfast. And ultimately, it promotes their health throughout the day. This is tied into the idea that the earlier start improves academic performance. Many students have noted both in the, when they're in person at school, when it's their cohort of the hybrid model, or whether they're at home, that being able to start later, they are better, they perform from an academic standpoint, better than they would. And they notice for their own situation at the 7:30 start. And also, the earlier start allows for students to, allows for the school day to go till 2:30 instead of 12 or 12:30, which gives students much needed social interaction during lunchtime, when this can be for some, maybe one of the only, or the only social interaction they have with their friends or peers from school throughout the day. So I think on the, on behalf of the advisory council, we are definitely glad to see that the proposal passed included this start time and is in accordance with kind of the feedback of students. I'd also like to discuss face to face time. And the council has, the council believes that the 9:25 start time will allow everyone to take advantage of the opportunity for in-person learning. And I have to make a decision between maybe sleeping in in the morning and choosing for in-person instruction. So it will allow students ultimately choose whether they want to go in person or whether they want to stay virtual and not have kind of sleep schedule be part of the equation. I know that the policy was passed with the five day return. There's been a concern in terms of asynchronous Wednesdays. This has definitely been a issue where some students are in favor of keeping, and some parents are in favor of keeping the Wednesdays asynchronous. Some students and parents are looking towards the five day week. And this is an issue, I'm not sure if this is still amendable, because it was passed, but we could take a look at putting out a survey regarding the asynchronous Wednesday for the high school. I know that IA did a survey on this topic, and I'll let Erin discuss that in more detail. But I would say the idea of asynchronous Wednesdays are something that various students and parents have different opinions on. So I think, Erin, I can keep it shared, and then I can just go from here.
Yeah.
Ask a question first. Paul, can you roll back the slide? I just want to make sure I'm understanding that it is indeed, the, the second there, trends in student responses, that, that is from the group of students actually advocating for the earlier start time or for the new later start time?
That's exactly my question. And I was going to have the same thing, go back to that slide, because I think, I think from what Paul said and from everything else that he's advocated for, I think it should maybe be later start time.
Do we, do we want to hang out for a second? I know, do we want to just have Erin finish, and then we could ask the questions combined? Erin, is there a couple more slides? And then we can go through and ask whatever questions for the complete presentation.
Yes, I just wanted to go over the three main concerns from an IA standpoint, because our views, they only slightly differ from BH. And then we also have some data from a survey concerning the face to face time and asynchronous Wednesdays. If we could discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so Paul, if you want to go ahead and try clicking on that survey, and then head to slide four. Great. So after we compiled data from the survey, and this is data from students from all three IA campuses and current slash guardians, we found that many were spending, or sorry, let me back up. We realized that a main concern about asynchronous days is that maybe students aren't as engaged in school or academic pursuits yet.
Hey Erin, just, just for a second. Hey Erin, one second. Paul, can you blow that up? I can't, you know, I mean, I don't know if you want us to see the charts with the wording on it? Okay.
Yes, of course, we would love for you guys to see the charts. So here, these pie charts are representing the amount of engagement that students have in academic pursuits on asynchronous days, or otherwise known as days that we would not have online instruction. And from a student perspective, the majority of students are engaged in academics either the same amount as they would be if we were being instructed, or even more. And I believe this stems from catching up on assignments and working towards things that concern college, such as SAT prep and applying for different scholarships and doing school research. So for schools that, or for students at our school, this has been a really valuable time for us, and we'd be sad to see it go. And just in case you don't believe the students when we say it, even the parents and guardians surveyed, over, around 55% did state that they saw their students more engaged in academic pursuits. So we just really hope you take this into consideration when trying to implicate the five day plan. As we've seen, the asynchronous Wednesdays as a very important anchor in our school careers, and it has helped a lot with getting us away from technology for a day and just having us focus on what we need to focus on. Thank you, Paul. You can go back to the original slide that we had. As for testing and assessment, assessment methods, this has been a big concern at our school, because I'm sure, as many students have seen, there's been an increase in cheating and academic dishonesty, as being on an online platform has really made that a lot easier. And even though with this new motion, having five days in person, cheating can still be apparent for those who choose to stay at home, and it just becomes that much easier. So we know that cheating is something that's pretty much inevitable when we're learning through this platform. But we also understand that there could maybe be different assessment methods and more discussion based and collaborative assessments in order to kind of combat that, just to make sure that we're learning as much as possible, and we're getting an honest report of what students have learned, either virtually or in class. Again, we think that this would be better suited for virtual learning, but still applicable to in-person learning if that chooses to pass. And then with assessments online, especially, we've seen many platforms that have been partnered with Canvas. Some have been successful and some have not. I know that a very unsuccessful trial for us has been the Quest platform, which, the structure of the platform causes students a lot of stress and causes lower performance than normal on tests. So we'd really appreciate it if teachers could come to a consensus about maybe just using Canvas or using testing platforms that students have found a liking to in order to do, conduct assessments if they choose to do so. And then one last thing I wanted to touch on was, your face to face time for IA students. As mentioned earlier in the public comments, I think one person maybe mentioned it, a lot of students really do enjoy face to face time, and we look forward to seeing more of it. However, there have been a lot of concerns with being on Zoom and the start times that we've mentioned earlier. For IA students, especially, we think starting school at 7:45 a.m. and going until 2:35 a.m., which we find to be manageable, but it's very tiring for a lot of people who have to wake up now, drive themselves to school. Same with parents who have to wake up and bring their children to school. So we'd appreciate it if that start time could be revisited and maybe revised in the future. Other than that, we would love to see more face to face time, as long as it doesn't involve taking away that asynchronous Wednesday, as we've discussed the significance of it already. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to.
Oh, yep, absolutely, Paul.
I wanted to clarify something really quick, because I know what, kind of was getting out of the first slide. Let's see if I can move back. I think we, we, we kind of re-framed the wording, and I think we didn't, we didn't look through, so there's a confusing part. The main reasons had to do with the later start time. So I think when we kind of revisited the wording, we didn't change it enough. So the, the trends in the student responses were that the later start times allow for the healthier sleep schedule, the later start timer is correlated with the better performance, and the later start time gives students the social interaction during lunchtime. So I apologize if that was a confusion.
That's okay. So before my colleagues have some questions, I wanted to thank Paul, you, Erin, and the advisory council for putting this together, surveying the students in both buildings. It's a lot of work, and you guys put this together in a short amount of time. So on behalf of the board, Pat and, and the district, we appreciate that, and thank you for the feedback. With that.
Wait, Paul, can I, can I say something? Just for Paul and Erin, just to let you know that the start time issue is emergent, and it's being discussed in every board instructional committee meeting to include International Academy. So we'll have more information soon.
Do, and you could leave the presentation up, but for my colleagues, so I can only see Jennifer now. If someone has a question, can you just indicate in the chat that you have a question? Otherwise, we thank both of you for your presentation. That was very informative. And then.
Sorry, I do have a.
Okay.
I have a question. Okay, I couldn't get in the chat quick enough. I just wanted to say, that was an awesome, an awesome presentation. Thank you very much. That's the quickest I've ever seen a slide get fixed. That was pretty impressive. I mean, really impressive. I did know what you meant, anyway. Very consistent with 400 plus comments. I can tell you that community is pretty much split 50/50 on virtual or in person. But two things came through loud and clear, where literally 100% agreement. One was later start time, much later start time for high school. And the other one was that everybody loves Pat Watson. So I agree with both of those. And thank you so much for the presentation and for staying with us this late. I know it's not that late for you guys, just with the later start time. But anyway, thank you. Very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Erin. No, 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 our pleasure. Thank you very much. Feel free to stay, feel free to drop off. With that, we will go to our committee reports. FFLA, I believe, since Siva missed one of the meetings, Howard will be reporting out for the two meetings that we had.
Yes, I will. Thank you, President Cohen. Obviously, with the lateness of the hour, I'll be incredibly brief. We had in the last month, two FFLA meetings. First was on February 11th. It was the regularly scheduled meeting, and attendance was Paul, Siva, and myself. And on February 17th, we had a special meeting, which I'll talk about in a second. And in attendance there was Lisa, Jennifer, and myself. At the February 11th meeting, we talked about five different issues. We had a review of the current status of the bond. We talked about roles and responsibilities between Barton Mallow, the construction firm, French, the architect, and ourselves. We also talked about a little bit of a timeline over the next four to six months for the construction work, starting in middle school north and the Lhasa campus, middle school south at BHMS. We talked on about finances. So far, we spent $1.6 million out of the $200 million that the community so generously approved back in August. And we also talked about the reporting structure, the, the structure of the report that we get, and the, some of the definitions and some of the numbers and the columns in the report. And Barton Mallow is taking some of our comments back under consideration and will give us a updated report or updated information in our March meeting. We also had a report by an organization called PFM, who helped us with getting the bond structured. But they have another duty through a gentleman named Mike Berry, who's an investment advisor, because we have close to $100 million in our checking account, which we'll be spending over the next couple of years. So he is actually taking that $100 million and investing in very, very conservative investments. So he gave us an update as to how that works. He also gave us a little bit of an idea on a pretty complicated such, or a rule under the IRS called arbitrage, which I won't bore you with right now. But he explained how that works and making sure that we keep following the, the rules that the IRS has given us. We talked about sinking fund projects. There's one in particular, it's out for bid for some improvements at the IA, matter of fact, that we just heard about, which also is called TROB, which was the, the name of the building before the IA took it over. So that is out for bids, and that should be back in March. We also had conversations about the, the budget that Tina just went through, so I won't go through that. We also then talked about the owner's representative services that we'll be talking about in a few minutes, which I won't go through on that. And we talked about some other things related to a bid that we approved last meeting for desk barriers, and also a small change that occurred in the way that one of the rating agencies, which is called Moody's, changed their methodology. It did not change the, the rating for Bloomfield Hills schools. So that was more of a FYI for us. The meeting that we then, that was on the March, sorry, February 11th. Then on February 17th, a week later, we had a special meeting where we talked just about the owner's rep information. And Tina presented the information that you'll be seeing in a few minutes, specifically about the different bidders. So I won't go through that. But what you're going to be seeing from Tina in a little bit is exactly what the FFLA saw then on the 17th. And we did make a recommendation, and Tina will go through that when she goes through her presentation. So that is the report for FFLA.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Howard? Good, very good, Howard. We will go to Jennifer, report of the Board of Instructional Committee.
Hi, the big committee met on February 1st, and we started by talking about the elementary and middle school population sizes and catchment changes for the fall of 2023, when the new middle schools and elementary schools will be running. We, we, this work is not really even in its infancy yet, but we just talked about the shape of it and the report from, that there's a stable enrollment projection.
projection through that time. As, as you guys probably already know, there's going to be a community stakeholder group under, with Rob Durekka, and I believe Paul Wells as well. And that group will, they will look at different proposals and they will have the opportunity to give input and feedback, in Pat's words, to, to think of all the things that, that we haven't thought of. We also discussed the survey results on start times. Administration is working up options that we are going to be talking about at our next meeting, which is on Monday. I put the question to the committee about International Academy, because it just seems equitable to me that the two high schools start at the same time. And the information provided was that it's, it's more complicated for IA, because although the core teachers do not, they don't share between buildings, the teachers only teach at one building, yet they are considered, I'm talking about the three campuses, yet they are considered to be in the same department, and they have departmental meetings, they have shared PD, they, they have a lot of structure involved in their work life that involves coordination of times between the three campuses. So we're going to continue to talk about that, and, and I am going to advocate for all the brilliant people who, who work at IA to, to come up with a solution so that, so that that school can enjoy a later start time as well. We talked about latchkey a very little bit, just that with any changes in start times, that there will still be an AM and a PM latchkey, independent on what elementary start and end times are. Our goal is to communicate a plan for new start times by the end of this school year, so that all families can make any necessary logistical arrangements or start new habits and schedules in preparation for the fall. We also discussed the extended continuity of learning plan, ECO. I think we're going to reapprove it in a few minutes. You know that it's a state requirement that we have to pass every month during COVID times. And what our administration, they've done something really, really great, which is, and this has been linked to the weekly update. If you, if you don't have this document, I'll resend it to you. They've, they've made, they've merged the ECO report with a lot more data, so that it, it kind of reads like a school improvement plan or a district improvement plan, where each building provides a lot of data and they provide action steps and with dates. So it really reads more like a mid-year academic report, and it has data from, from different assessments. They are tracking enrollments in higher-level courses, and we discuss that we are on track to fulfill our goals this year of maintaining proficiencies akin to what our proficiency levels before COVID. So basically, not losing any proficiency statistical data, to my knowledge. And Todd, correct me if I'm wrong when we're done, we still don't know if M-Step is going to be administered this year. Our next BIC meeting, I said, is on Monday, and we have a jam-packed agenda. We're going to be looking at academic progress so far this year for grades six through 12. I had asked to see some data on that. We're going to be talking about the return to learn plan for April 5th that we just passed, implementation of developmental kindergarten for the fall of 2021, math equity challenge, K-5 science improvements, thinking about the future of Bloomfield Virtual, what, what will be its role and its iteration in a post-COVID environment. Also talking about start times, as I just said, and high school credit recovery. That's my report.
Thank you, Jennifer. Pat, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to follow up with trustee Baron. I didn't give you enough, I want to make it crystal clear. I kind of rambled on about in-person and virtual. So I'll make it crystal clear, so everyone understands. If somebody is currently in-person right now and wants to go virtual, we will be able to accommodate all those moves. If someone is virtually right now and wants to come in-person, we'll do our best to accommodate them, and we're going to prioritize our students with IEPs. We need to make sure that we have enough room, so we can keep that three feet of social distancing, and that will be part of the scheduling. So the way I said it before probably was confusing. It made it seem like it's open, full ways, both ways, but it's not. So again, if you are currently in-person and wish to go virtual, we for sure can accommodate you. If you're currently virtual and you like to come back full in-person, we'll do our absolute best to accommodate you. That might mean you should be at Connet, but there is one spot at Way, you know, whatever we can do, prioritizing those students with the IEP. But we've got to stay with those three feet parameters. So I just wanted to clarify that, because it wasn't clear when I answered the last time. Thank you, President Cullen.
Thank you, Pat. Lisa, Oakland County School Board Association update?
Yeah, I'll be brief. The Oakland County School Board has had a couple bi-weekly meetings. We, we had one last night, and we had a speaker from the MASB and Board President from West Bloomfield, who co-led a really great workshop on social, a social contract that, you know, it would be interesting for us to, to create as a board when we're back in-person. So I have notes and, and it was we break out rooms, so, you know, I, I took notes and I have handouts that we can use if and when we decide to do it with our board. There is a, in two, two weeks, I have to check the date on that, an annual dinner coming up, which will be virtual, and I hope that everybody attends the speaker. No, that's, yeah, two weeks. The speaker blanking on it, and have notes. Anyway, I'll, I'll send everyone information about it. There's a guest speaker. I believe many of us already signed up for it. But
I think it may be Jay Marks.
It is Jay Marks. Yes, it is. Thank you. Yep, I don't know. I have notes and I can't find the page. Anyway.
Yeah, March, March 3rd, I think.
Before, and he's excellent. So well worth going. Thanks, Jennifer. I think that's it. Anyone have any questions?
Trustee Efros, yes, I, just one little comment. You know, one of our board goals that we approved recently says that we're going to be working on board norms, which even some of our public commented on. And we have that by June of 2021. That, I think, the, the social contract would be a perfect adjunct to that. And you, you mentioned that when we're back face-to-face, hopefully that's sooner rather than later, but if by chance it's not, I see no reason why we couldn't be starting to work on that in the virtual world.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll see. You know, I'm all for whatever we can do, you know, timely. So if it works that we're not back in person as quickly as we think, and we're doing it virtually, then so be it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. No more questions. Jennifer, Oakland County Health Division update?
Yeah, so the Oakland County Health Division is very nice. They have a meeting every other Wednesday for a half an hour with school board members to give us COVID information. We, the weekly data report, as Pat presented in the beginning tonight, just came out today. So my, my information here is stale. Basically, the county's been going down in all metrics for several weeks, and today saw a, a, a small uptick that, that is really quite small. But the hospitalization rate and death rate remain very low, with strong and stable healthcare capacity. They discussed that there was some turnover in the school nurses. I, I am not sure if that has affected Bloomfield at all. So maybe that's something, Pat, you could answer in a second. They did mention that at this time, there's no differential quarantine procedures for the South African or the Brazil variants. They did talk about the Save My Spot registration protocol for vaccination. They, they asked us to please relay the information, not to register on that site more than once. Also, if you, if, like, say you're an educator and you've signed up on Save My Spot, but then you end up getting a vaccine through Beaumont or a healthcare system, another healthcare system or a pharmacy, they've kindly asked that you then go in, and there's a button where you can remove yourself from Save My Spot, so that, so that you, you're not taking up two places in, in the vaccine line. They did announce that by March 1st, every educator who has registered in Save My Spot, starting from the first week of February, will have had or have been invited to their first appointment. So basically, in, in one month, they've been able to accommodate every educator who has signed up to get a vaccination. So that is just really, really great work. The people, I, I think I've said this in updates before, the people, when you're on the Save My Spot list, you, you will get an email, and frequently that goes into junk, spam, promotions. So they encourage, they, they said that they have emailed everybody about two weeks ago. So if you're on that list and haven't seen an email, to, to please check your, your junk folder, because it's probably there. And then the last thing they mentioned, which I'm a little ignorant of this, that there was a question about whether Michigan has adopted the CDC's recommendation of leaving quarantine on day eight, if you test negative on day five. And the, the feedback given was that Michigan has not yet adopted that as a procedure. So to, to be continued.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any questions or comments? Okay, we will go to Pat, Extended Learning Plan.
Thank you, President Cullen. Give me one second. There are no material changes to report for February 2021. This agenda item is posted in accordance with the Senate Return to Learn Bill package. The Extended Continuity of Learning Plan was originally presented and approved by the Board of Education on September 24th of 2020. It is posted monthly to SEPI and on the district's website in accordance to transparency recording requirements mandated by the state, following each month's board action. So I move the Board of Education reconfirm the Bloomfield Hills School Extended Continuity of Learning Plan as mandated, as mandated monthly by the Senate Return to Learn Bill package and as presented by the administration.
Thanks, Pat. We will go now to 12A, Board Business. Can I get a motion?
I, I think Pat just made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. I don't know if legally one of us has to make it or not. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm so
All right. I, I move the Board of, we're, we're all sleepy. I, I move the Board of Education, reconfirm the Bloomfield Hills Schools Extended Continuity of Learning Plan as mandated monthly by the State Return to Learn Bill package and as presented by the administration to include the application of metrics to the document approval by the Board of Education on December 17, 2020, and September 24, 2020, respectively.
Support.
Okay, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Siva?
Yes.
Okay, motion, I, yes, motion passes. 12B, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I move the agreement with the Bloomfield Hills Association of Educational Interpreters and Interveners, otherwise known as BHAE, little i, little i, on contract language and compensation for the 2020-2021 school year be approved as presented.
Support. I support.
Keith, do you want to say anything before we vote?
Sure, President Cullen. So tonight, you have a settlement agreement before you for our interpreters and intervenors. These are a group of about 20 folks that work with our DHH group and spread across the district. Their original contract expired in June, on June 30th of 2020, and we had brought in Mr. Bob Schindler of Miller Johnson, and he worked out with the association a settlement agreement that you have before you tonight. With that settlement agreement, because their original contract expired on June 30th, there is no retroactive pay. So upon board ratification, if that's the direction we move this evening, their step increases and longevity increases would take place at that time.
Thank you, Keith. Any discussion? Okay, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Eva?
Yes.
Let me ask, motion passes. Thanks, Keith. Thanks for your work involving that. We will go to 12C, FFLA Committee Recommendation. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education award request for proposal number 1036, Owner's Representative Services to Plant Moran Cressa for the initial term of one year, authorizing the superintendent to finalize the agreement in collaboration with the administration, legal counsel, and Plant Moran Cressa.
I support.
We got support. We have Paul Wells and Tina. Paul, want to say a few words?
Well, good evening, everybody. And again, a pleasure to continue to work with the district as one of the strategic partners leading up to the passage of the bond. We're very excited to be a part of the team. We know of the $200 million bond. There's about $73 million that are really owner directed. So we're really here to become an extension of Ms. Kostick and Mr. Vervuska's teams, because as you know, a 1.285 million square feet of facility space, about $95 million, that's just their day-to-day job. So I can appreciate the confidence that the board and the district are placing in Plant Moran Cressa. As a resident parent, you have my commitment personally, as well as professionally, to ensure that the district's best interests are at forefront.
Thanks, Paul. Sorry, Tina, I probably should have had you go first before Paul, but it's 11:12. But Tina, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I'll just say that this is, this is the result of seeking proposals, and there were five firms that proposed. FFLA was the committee that we continually updated and discussed this before the FFLA Committee recommendation to Plant Moran Cressa. That's it.
Thank you. Thanks, Tina.
I have a question.
Tina, Paul, any questions? Jennifer?
Yeah, I just, Tina, at FFLA, you had gone over, you know, cost for a multi-year package, but we, we still didn't have a final figure for, for the one-year contract. Can you, can you let us know what that is?
We will definitely do that. So upon board approval, we'll finalize the rest of the contract. The contract is actually part of the request for proposal, so the bulk of it is done, especially a lot of the legalese. And, and so I know Paul is ready upon board approval to jump right in and, and get that executed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, we have motion second. Howard?
I think Siva raised his hand.
Oh, sorry. Siva, did you raise your hand? I didn't see that.
Yes, I'm sorry. So, so real quick, Tina. So, you know, obviously, the, the board's going to move and approve this request today, but is there going to be review of the scope, again, that's the document that, that you and probably PW, PMC had put together, on, on scope of the, of the various stakeholders for, for leading versus supporting, et cetera? That's something you and I talked about yesterday. Is there still room for review and discussion on that document?
Well, that, so currently, that is what we will go through and do upon board approval. So we have a matrix right now that outlines at a higher level all of the responsibilities of the current firms under contract. And, and then we add a column for Plant Moran Cressa, which Paul Wells has already provided a draft of that I've, I've shared with the board. which Paul Wells has already provided a draft of that I've, I've shared with the board. And so we will now go through and finalize that. The details are in the contract. There's more details than just that overview. If you read the contract that was already provided with the request for proposal, as well as the contracts we have with the other firm. So is there room? Yes, there is absolutely room. I know Paul already suggested what the role would be, and we were hoping to get this executed and going before the next committee meeting, because that's three weeks out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Nope. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Diva?
Yes.
I mean, yes, motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, Paul. I'm looking forward to working with you. With that, we will go to 12D. Can I get a motion?
I move the, oh, go ahead.
No, go for it.
I move the Board of Education approve the mid-year budget revision for fiscal year 2020-2021. As detailed in the attachments below is the summary of the mid-year revisions. Do you want me to say the numbers?
Um, that's, that's fine. I think you made the motion. Do I have support?
Support.
Question? Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Diva?
Yes.
I mean, yes, motion passes. Thanks for your hard work, Tina. Appreciate it you. And please go back to your team and thank them as well. 12E, Approval of International Academy Revised Consortium Agreement. Can I get a motion?
Sure. I move the Board of Education approve the International Academy Revised Consortium Agreement as amended by the First Amendment.
You have support?
Support.
Worked by Jennifer. Any discussion? Howard?
So let me understand. We were given the amendment, which is 11 pages. But this is, let me, have we as a board approved the base proposal? That's 33 pages. Have we done that in the past?
You, you mean the consortium agreement, the revised consortium agreement?
The revised consortium agreement.
Yeah, no, we, we did not approve that.
So what are we approving tonight? Are we approving the amendment by itself? Are we approving the amendment and the consortium agreement that was circulated amongst the other districts a year ago?
Lisa, do you want to comment?
Yes. I, I can explain that. I have the same question, Howard. Because we are one of two districts that did not approve the consortium agreement, we have to approve the agreement and the amendment at the same time, because the amendment can't stand alone. So we didn't approve the original consortium agreement, but we will approve it only with the amendment. And that's the way that our motion is worded.
Okay, so we're approving both. And, because I was confused about that, so I put a call into, or an email into the superintendent this afternoon, or this, late this morning, I believe. And middle of the afternoon, maybe about 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, we received the 33-page document from a year ago. So has, has all the board, in particular the new members who were not part of the pretty long history that this whole process has been going through over a number of years, is, are, are, are all of the board really comfortable in approving basically 40 pages worth of, of documentation?
All right. I, I want to add that we didn't approve it. We are not, we are only approving it in conjunction with the amendment. So I, I struggled with the same thing that you're talking about. And went through the whole, we would never have approved it alone. We're only approving it because it accompanies the amendment. And the amendment can't stand alone. So we're approving the amended and restated contract.
I, I understand now procedurally what we're doing, but I'm wondering more, conceptually, do we all understand what's in the 40 pages and what we're approving? I mean, have we all read through it? And number one, and number two, it's a lot of legalese. Is this something that maybe we should table this for tonight and have the superintendent present, present us a little bit of a summary of what we're actually approving? Because the last, the last consortium agreement that we've had is from 1996.
All right.
All right, all right, Pat, one, one second. Pat, what, is, is this agreement time-sensitive? And Pat, can you comment to the board? Because I think we need some discussion on this, on the time-sensitive and then, and maybe a point to Howard's question.
Sure, let me, let me do my best, and anyone else is welcome to hop in as well. So when I first came on board in January of 2020, there was concern about IA and the new government's model that might be coming out. So a new consortium agreement came out, and I met with the current board members during that time. My understanding was that there were parts of the new agreement that we didn't really like, that may not have Bloomfield Hills School's best interests in mind. So we started working with Dana Abrams to make sure that there was an amendment that would be based on what is best for Bloomfield Hills. And so that's what we came up with, and that's what's being presented tonight, is what we feel is in our best interest. And part of doing that, the old consortium agreement, or sorry, the date that opt out of International Academy, we asked for it to be extended until March 15th so that all boards could have the opportunity to vote on the amendment, which we, is written on our behalf in our best interest. So I worked with Troy School District, and so Richmond Chesapeake, Troy Superintendent Troy, Paul Solis Superintendent here on Valley, to make sure they were on board with the amendment. And then we divided up all the other superintendents in the consortium, called them, explained that Bloomfield Hills really didn't have the opportunity to weigh in as much as we would have liked with the original agreement. And we've got this amendment, and you know, dated January 26, 2021, which captures the main points, which was sent out to all board members saying, here's what we want in the amendment. All the superintendents in the consortium were understanding. They got where we were coming from. I believe five or six have already voted it in. And the deadline, whether to stay in the consortium or pull out, is now March 15th, I believe, is the drop dead date for that. So we're here today. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I, I, no, I, I'll let you finish. I just want to kind of frame it out from my perspective. I'm sorry, Pat, continue.
No, no, we're, go ahead. I'm fine. Thank you.
All right. So now listening in is that your recommendation, you and Dana and Tina, is for us to accept it. You know, you've sent that to us. It is time-sensitive, because if we don't accept it by March 15th, we're at risk of pulling out. So I just want to kind of frame it, you know, for, for our colleagues. And your recommendation, going through this with Dana and Tina, is for us to recommend it. Is, is for us to, is, okay, all right.
That is correct. It's written on our behalf. So other schools weren't involved in writing this, just from a Bloomfield Hills perspective. What do we need to ensure that we're safe in the International Academy? We have all the rights we want. So it was just us writing it, and then now everyone approving it and being willing to move it forward, which they've been very nice about.
As I understand it, several of these impetuses to do the amendment had to do with protecting the interests of the other nine districts at Central Campus, which were not, you know, well represented in the original draft. And I, Lisa, I would yield to your judgment. You've been up and down and all around both iterations of the consortium agreement. And we, you know, some, some months ago, I think it was early fall, we made a list of concerns, we made a list for, for Dana Abrams to address. And i- if it is to your satisfaction that those things have been addressed correctly, then there is no logical reason why we would not proceed. There is no, there are only downsides to not passing this, guys. Enough's enough. It's time to move forward.
So Diva, you have a question to hand up?
Yeah, so I, I was just going to comment. I, I can't speak for Michelle or John, but for myself, I don't think between now and March 15th, I am going to have time to come up to speed on all the nuances of the IA. So I'm happy trusting the superintendent and all the senior four trustees here on the board that you've all come to the right, come with the, come up with the right proposal. So okay to proceed today.
Good. Thank you, Diva. Howard?
Again, there are so many issues that have been circulating around related to the IA. This is the, the contract that we have, the, the agreement with the other 12 districts. But in addition to that, because we are fiscal agent and also the landlord of the building, I know Tina and Karen and her finance people have been very busy. Matter of fact, even with, with Paul Wells and, and other people to look at the budget for the 2021-2021 school year and trying to make sure that Bloomfield Hills is, is made whole for all of our actual costs, bringing the lease of the building to market rate, looking whatever our overhead costs are, and making sure that those are received properly, which they haven't been in the past, looking at the tuition is calculated. There are just numerous issues. Just want to confirm, Tina, that by approving this contract tonight, we're not precluding ourselves from being able to make those kind of adjustments for the 21-22 school year?
No, we are not precluded from making further adjustments with the budget.
Very good. So we look forward to having those discussions at FFLA over the next number of months. Thank you.
I, I just want to add to, the urgency of the March 15th date is that we have a lease expiring in June. And so in order for Dana to go ahead and negotiate a lease, we have to have a, a working consortium agreement. We weren't a party to the last one. So we were in some weird kind of flux where we existed, because most of the schools were parties to a contract that Bloomfield wasn't a party to. So this contract, it's a compromise, like all contracts. So there are things about it that we compromised on, but we did, like Pat said, we protected the things that were most important to Bloomfield and to the Central Campus Consortium districts. So when Bloomfield benefited, so did the other schools that, that attend Oakma campus. And that's really the difference in the amendment, was that there were added levels of protection for both Bloomfield as the fiscal agent and all the, the districts that attend there. I do know the ins and outs of the contract. Diva, if you or anyone has questions and wants to be caught up to speed, you know, I can maybe save you some time in pouring through a long contract if you want.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm going to follow up with you on that.
Any other discussions? All right, I'm going to call a vote. Howard?
At long last, yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Diva?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yes, motion passes. Thank you, Tina, Pat, and Tina and team, for your hard work regarding that. 12F, Michigan Association of School Board Board Director Elections. So what we'll do is we'll go around in A, B, C order. We all know who the candidates are, and we'll, we'll go through. And we could, you know, if you want to say a comment or two about the candidate that we'd like to propose. And then if we get a majority, then we'll put that person's name and make a motion. We'll start with Howard.
Thank you, President Cullen. There are four candidates that threw their name in the hat for this representative of Region 8, which is Oakland, McComb, and Wayne County. I know three of them. They're from Oakland County. A fourth one is from McComb that I had not met. At one of the Oakland County School Board Association meetings, they came and did a little bit of a presentation to each one of us. They also gave us a write-up, as we've all seen. I also have had conversations one-on-one with a couple of them specifically about their candidacy. It was a, it's a very hard choice for me, because I, I know and respect a number of them. And I think they, they could all do a wonderful job representing us in, in MASB, which is Michigan Association of School Boards, for anyone who doesn't know what that is. But my, my choice is Burgett McQuiston. I've known Burgett for a number of years, and she's not only been involved in a lot of legislative issues, but has been on her board for nine years and has achieved a pretty high level of professional development through the award process at, at MASB. She also said that she would be much more transparent and open in communicating with us as board members. It's been my experience in eight years on the board that once we do these elections, we never really see these people again. We see them on a social basis, but we really don't see them as a representative coming and saying, you know, here's what's going on in MASB, and here's what, what, what would you like MASB to do? Because this is a three-year term of office. And Burgett has committed that, well, not committed. She said that that's exactly what she wants to do. She wants to be much more involved in talking to all the districts that are under her purview. So my, my preference would be Burgett McQuiston from Lake Orion Community Schools.
Thanks, Howard. Jennifer?
I support Sandra Dukey. She's a valued and respected member of our team. And I know that the other candidates also have wonderful qualities, so I will echo Howard's statement that this, this is, really is a tough one.
Thank you, Jennifer. Jonathan?
I don't know any of the four individuals, so I'm going to make my decision based on the commentary here tonight.
Thank you, Jonathan. So you're deferring, you're waiting until other people speak? So we'll just, we'll, we'll get back to you? Is that what you want?
Is this a voting time? Because if I'm voting, I'm voting for Burgett.
Yeah, we're just, we're, we're going around, we're saying our candidate. And if we get to a majority, then we'll put that person as part of the motion.
I prefer, my preference among the four candidates is Burgett based on reading through their, their, the information.
Lisa? I'm sorry, Jonathan, then. Thank you, Jonathan. Lisa?
I just want to say, you know, it's, it's a nice dilemma to have so many qualified candidates from which you choose. Of the four, I only know one of them really well. I've been fortunate enough to serve on the board of the Oakland County School Board Association with Burgett McQuiston. She's an exceptional board member and officer. She's always prepared. She offers the most helpful support for any board issue that arises. She knows the MASB. She has served on different MASB committees. She knows MASB resources. She's been instrumental in making suggestions that have resulted in better support for all of our boards during the, during the pandemic. She has a vision that will enable all board members to become better informed. And above all, her integrity and ethics are just exemplary. They're a model that every board member should aspire to. I have no doubt that Sandra Dukey is, who is an exemplary employee, brings the same work ethic to, to her board role, but I haven't seen her in that capacity. brings the same work ethic to, to her board role, but I haven't seen her in that capacity. So I, I don't have anything to judge that on, and that's why I would vote. Region Eight's gonna be well-served with whoever gets elected, but I'm gonna vote for Burgett McQuiston.
Thank you, Lisa. Michelle? Yeah, Michelle?
Thank you, President Cohen. So for the individuals that actually reached out, and I was actually able to also read the information online. So from what I can read, I am going to recommend Sandra Dukie, similar to Jennifer.
Thank you, Michelle. Siva?
Like Jonathan, I'm gonna defer to going around. So, so Paul, maybe you go first, and now I'll go.
Okay, I'm gonna vote for Sandra.
I will also vote for Sandra.
Okay, can we make a motion?
I move that Sandra Dukie be, I move the Board of Directors votes for Sandra Dukie as Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education candidate for Region Eight, Michigan School Board Association Board of Directors.
I support.
Okay, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Siva?
Yes.
I mean, yes, motion passes. Adoption of school vaccination resolution. Can I get a motion?
Sure. I move the Board of Education adopt the school personnel vaccination resolution as presented.
We have support? Somebody supported, was it Jonathan? Okay. We'll have Jennifer for the minutes. Support? Any discussion? We can vote. Howard?
But instead of reading the whole thing, why don't I at least read the "Therefore Be It Resolved" piece, so we know what we're voting on?
Yes.
So again, I'm not gonna read the, I'm not gonna read the, the 10 wherethes. I'll just read the "Be It Resolved," that Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education urges Gretchen Whitmer, Governor Gret Whitmer, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Director Elizabeth Hertel, and Michigan Legislature to take the following actions. Two, secure and provide an adequate weekly vaccine supply to every county health department. Two, provide direction to all county health departments, pharmacies, and health systems to prioritize vaccination of Group 1B school personnel to those that currently or will have in-person contact with students, parentheses, including teachers, therapists, power professionals, principals, school building secretaries, school bus drivers, food service, and custodial personnel, close friends. And number three, encourage partnerships between designated vaccine providers in each, in every local school district to offer vaccine clinics specifically for the purpose of escalating the vaccine, vaccination timeline for those school personnel.
Thank you. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
I vote yes, but I want to ask a question. This resolution came out of OCSBA, is that right, Lisa?
I think the next one came out of Oakland County School Board Association. This one...
Does anybody know? I'm just curious.
I think the next one came out of MASB. No, the next one came from Dave Randall's.
Oh, all right.
This may have come out of.
Howard, do you know where, what the?
I, I do not. This one I do not know.
Okay, thank you, all good.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Still thinking about this one, but okay, yes.
Siva?
Yes.
I mean, yes, motion passes. Last but not least, the resolution to meet in person. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education adopt the resolution to permit school boards to meet in person as presented.
I support.
Okay, and let me give, let me give a little bit of explanation on this one. This one did come from Oakland Schools, or it came from MASB by way of Oakland Schools. So this is an MASB-originated proposal. And again, I will just read the "Therefore Be It Resolved" section. Therefore be it resolved that Bloomfield Hills Schools request that Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the Governor allow school boards to have the option to meet either virtually, in person, or a combination of the two beginning immediately. Just, and I think this even was commented once or twice in the public comment, that currently it is illegal per the law, and the emergency orders coming out of the Department of Health and Human Services, that our school board cannot meet person-to-person. And what we are requesting is that the Governor and the Health and Human Services changes that rule such that it permits us to meet person-to-person, so that we can be similar to what we're requesting our students to, and our teachers to do on April 5th.
Thanks, Howard. Any other discussion? We'll vote. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Siva?
Yes.
I mean, yes, motion passes. Call for adjournment. Thank you, everyone. Have a long night. Appreciate everyone's hard work. We'll talk soon.
Thank you, everybody.
Night, everyone.